We're not quite ready to start yet because we're having... It wouldn't matter if I started anyway because people aren't listening.
What?
What? Excuse me?
What I was going to say was, "We're not quite ready to start. We're having a few technical difficulties, but we'll be with you in a minute." Thank you.
Oh, wait. Let me review my public comments. Two hours, and I'm done reading this for the last.
So we're gonna start. It is 6:09 on...
Recording in progress.
6:09 on 4/22 for the special and regular meeting. And continued adjourned special meeting. Sarah, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Voles, here. Councilmember Big Stick.
Present.
Councilmember Beer.
Here.
Mayor Protam Beckmeyer.
Present.
Mayor Vatalas.
Here. And if everybody could please remember to put a tag in their car. You noted that there was a police officer down there today, so you could get a ticket if you don't put the tag up. And now I'm going to read the land acknowledgement. The City of Pacifica acknowledges that we occupy the unceded ancestral homeland of the Ramatu Shaloni people, who are the original inhabitants of the San Francisco Peninsula. We honor the Ramatu Shaloni people for their enduring commitment to Mother Earth. As the indigenous protectors of this land and in accordance with their traditions, the Ramatu Shaloni have never ceded, lost nor forgotten their responsibilities as caregivers of this place, as well as for all people who reside in their traditional territory. We affirm their sovereign rights as first people and wish to pay our respects to the ancestors, elders, and relatives of the Ramatu Shaloni people. Now, Mary Beer will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just for all.
Yes. Tiger? Okay. We are going to have first the presentation of a preservation award 2024 by the Open Space and Parkland Committee to Julie Lancel.
Mayor Vatalas. Quickly, Kevin Woodhouse, city manager. Before we dive into the special presentations, I wanted to remove Consent Calendar item number five from tonight's agenda. It's not ready yet for council deliberation. That's the resolution of intention to establish the Pacifica Tourism Marketing District. And remove that, and it'll return to council at a future date to be determined.
Thank you very much. Now, Arlene.
Hi, I'm Arlene Patton, and I'm with the Pacifica Open Space and Parkland Advisory Committee, and I have a few of our members that are here. Wanna wave your hand. We're here to honor our devoted and beloved Julie Lancel, who has served this community for so many years and in so many ways. And I'll start out with a brief my introduction to Julie. I met her over 30 years ago when I was serving on the Pacifica Land Trust, and she was serving on council. Times were different back then. I wore power suits with padded shoulders, and Julie wore Birkenstocks. I think Julie still has those Birkenstocks, but I got rid of the power suits. You know, I remember sitting across from her at times thinking, I'd listened to her talk about stuff, and I would think, "This is never gonna happen. People aren't going to agree to pay for open space. They aren't going to work for free on our restoration of trails and establishing native plants." They're just not gonna do it. They all want to get paid. But they did. And I learned something about having faith and being a community from Julie. Thank you, Julie, for your big heart and humanity. We are all better off because of you. Thank you. All right. So here's the proclamation. Whereas Julie Lancel has been a leader and pioneer in Pacifica advocating for the continued preservation of open space and stewardship of natural areas, and whereas Julie has been actively involved with environmental protection efforts for Pacifica for the last 37 years, including her term of 10 years on the Open Space and Parkland Advisory Committee, as a former mayor and council member in the Pacifica City Council, and as a member of other local committees and groups demonstrating unwavering dedication to the environmental well-being of the community, and whereas Julie Lancel was active in the formation of the Pacifica Citizens Proposal, which played a key role in ending the plan to widen Highway 1 from Riena del Mar to Rockaway Beach, and whereas Julie Lancel became a member of the Open Space Task Force Committee in 1987, which produced the Open Space Task Force Report, that set forth the city's vision, a blueprint for open space preservation, and was appointed to the newly formed Open Space Committee in 1989, which paved the way to the establishment of the nonprofit land conservation group, the Pacifica Land Trust, in 1991. Whereas Julie joined the Board of Pacifica Land Trust in 1998, and her instrumental role in the campaign to save Maury Point in 2000 helped raise $100,000 from the community in two months to fund the purchase, along with the trust for public land from the National Park Service, further demonstrating her legacy as a champion of conservation in Pacifica. And whereas Julie's leadership during her tenure on the City Council from 1992 to 1994, and 2002 to 2010 advocated for the funding of the Pedro Point Headlands and various restoration projects from the Coastal Conservancy, and whereas Julie Lancel has continued her work toward preserving Pacifica's natural areas, rejoined the Board of the Pacifica Land Trust, and as a member following her departure from the City Council in 2010. Now, therefore, let it be proclaimed that we, the Open Space and Parkland Advisory Committee of the City of Pacifica, do hereby declare Julie Lancel to be the recipient of the 2024 Pacifica Open Space Preservation Award. Dunn, this... Do you want to say a few words?
This town has been just amazing for the 30 years or beyond. And also, people who come in, you know, when... Sorry. You know, just, it's such a wonderful place, and we're all so lucky that we landed here, you know? And I feel so happy about my time when I drove in, you know? And it was, it's a beautiful course, as we all know now. Beautiful place. And so thank you so much for everything that you're doing and continuing to do. And if, you know, if you need me to do something, call me, I guess.
May I?
Of course.
Council members. Wait, wait there for a second. Julie, Julie, wait. Arlene, can you have her wait there for a second?
Or have a seat?
Or, yeah, whichever's most comfortable. We're gonna speak for a second. Yes. Mary.
Julie. Hi, Julie. This is Mary talking to you over here. And I just wanna... Here I am. Julie, you're very special to me. And you're very special to our city. And I remember when you were the mayor, my daughter, when my daughter met you, she says, "That's the nicest mayor." And so that's how we referred to you, as the nicest mayor. Like, we didn't even say Julie, right? And when I had the opportunity to serve as mayor, my daughter gave me a card and said, "Well, now you can be the nicest mayor." And that's because of you, Julie. That's because of how you led. You led with love and integrity, and I cannot thank you enough. And thank you for being my friend. And yeah, thank you for everything you've done for our city.
Thanks. Tiger?
Hi, Julie. You know, I got to serve for the last moments, you know, adjacent to you while you're on OzPAC, and I'm on the liaison, and so I got to see you in these last moments of you being on OzPAC. But I've been living in this community for 40 years. You had a great part in building the community that I got to grow up in, where I got to work with establishing my mind, and hopefully becoming someone sitting in one of these chairs where you once sat, who hopefully can do anything to make this community better, as you have well-established making it, for me, once upon a time.
Thank you so much for saying that.
Thank you so deeply, not just for your work on OzPAC, but across the board.
It's a wonderful place, where we could all be, you know, and with different things that they wanted to do. But it was like we were free, you know, to follow up on something, you know, and not feel like, oh, no, no, it's not gonna be what, you know? It's a place to be and bring yourself and follow up, you know, if you have the time. And so I just think all of you are wonderful.
Sue?
Wonderful place.
Julie, thank you for your leadership. Really appreciate you.
Not done yet.
Not done yet. I know that a couple more people want to say something special and nice to you. I'll just keep it really short. Thanks for being so inspiring. Thanks for being, as Mary said, so kind, and being such a good inspiration and leader for us all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Christine?
When I moved to Pacifica, one of my first thoughts, seeing all this beautiful open space on our hillsides and so forth, like, what a forward-thinking city to have planned and saved, you know, all this amazing land. And then I went to the Pacifica's Environmental Family Event about all the projects that were proposed over decades, that you and others, you know, were critical in reviewing and seeing that they didn't really meet what Pacifica wanted. And there was a video of you, and that was the first time I had seen you in that presentation. And I don't know if you remember, but I still remember vividly, like, thinking, "Oh, my God, I love this woman. I feel so, such like a kindred spirit." And after the event was open, was over, I just went over and gave you a big hug. This was still like COVID, everybody's wearing masks, and you don't even know me, but here I am giving you a hug. And I'll just give you another one now. And you're just such an example of what a difference just one person can make, you know, who's involved in their community. Thank you so much.
And I'll try to be short, too, but you have always been true to what you believed, and that's so great. And one day, I remembered you were speaking up in favor of the golf course, and I'm going, "She's in favor of the golf course?" But it was such, it's such a special thing for this town, too, and all of the things that you've done here. And we really all appreciate you so much, and just thank you for everything you've done. Thanks. And Cindy Abbott, we have a card?
Hi, I'm Cindy Abbott. Happy Earth Day, everybody. You know, this town has a history of creating earth heroes for Earth Day. And Julie Lancel's been my hero for such a long time, so happy Earth Day. And I just wanted to add that to her list of things. She's my hero.
Thank you. Thanks. So, thank you very much. Our next proclamation is from the City of Pacifica in recognition of Mental Health Month, May 2024. This proclamation recognizes May 2024 as Mental Health Month in the City of Pacifica to reduce stigma, encourage support, and promote wellness to address mental health and substance abuse conditions. Whereas in 2021, one out of every eight San Mateo County adults had likely serious psychological distress in the past year. From 2019 to 2021, San Mateo County youth in grades seven to 11 reported chronic sadness and hopelessness, 29% and 43%, respectively, and in the past 12 months. And whereas every day, millions of people face stigma related to mental health and substance abuse conditions, and may feel isolated and alone, going years before receiving any help. If left untreated, they face life expectancies 25 years shorter than the general population. And whereas while mental health conditions are common across all types of demographics, certain communities face inequitable access to services, including people of color, LGBTQ+ community, youth, and older adults. And whereas mental health and substance use conditions are treatable health conditions, and people who have mental health and substance use conditions can recover and lead full and meaningful lives. And whereas the county, San Mateo County Board of Supervisors is the first in the country to pass a resolution in January 2024 declaring loneliness a public health crisis, and pledging to promote social connection in our communities. Given this public health priority, the theme for 2024 May Mental Health Month is Heal Through Connection: SMC Against Loneliness. Ongoing updates are posted at www.smchealth.org/mhm. And whereas the San Mateo County Behavioral Health and Recovery Services, Office of Diversity and Equity, the mayor's mental health initiative, and partners are collectively organizing activities that our community can participate in throughout the month, including free in-person and virtual events, advocacy days, and social media campaigns. And whereas the City of Pacifica City Council wishes to increase the public's knowledge of signs and symptoms of mental health and substance abuse conditions, in addition to professional and self-help resources and self-care practices. Now, therefore, I, Sue Vatalas, on the behalf of all of the City Council, the City of Pacifica, and all of its citizens, do hereby recognize May 2024 as Mental Health Month in the City of Pacifica to enhance public awareness of mental health, to help end the stigma, and direct members of the community to resources and support for mental health and substance use conditions. Done this 22nd day of April 2024. Sue Vatalas, mayor. And Emily, do we have a person who's accepting this proclamation?
I believe Andrew Dunn from the county is here.
Okay. I don't see anyone present. Are there any comments from council?
Mayor Vatalas, looks like there's a member from the San Mateo County Health that's on Zoom. Not Andrew Dunn, but perhaps I'll promote her to see if she would like to say a few comments.
Okay. Go ahead. Or would you, would you like to wait for comments from the council first?
It looks like she's declined being promoted to panelists, so she may not wish to speak.
Okay.
Go to council comments.
Okay. Council comments, Tiger?
Thank you, ma'am, ma'am, and I'll keep it brief, given our hefty load tonight. But something that's touching us all, and especially this year, never mind what's going on locally, a casual glance around the world, and...
on locally, a casual glance around the world, and it's so easy to lose an optimistic edge. And so this notion of healing through connection is the way we offset that, I think. And sometimes that actually boils down to having a conversation with someone whom you disagree to remember that you're both neighbors and your common humanity is the vast majority of what we actually share despite disagreements. I also wanted to take an opportunity to thank Mary Beer, who I believe is one of the founding mayors of the Mayor's Mental Health Initiative, and look forward to hearing your thoughts.
Next, Mayor.
I think we can all feel how important it is to check on each other. I think more than anything, through the Mayor's Mental Health Initiative, we were able to talk to other electeds across the county and just really remind them, like, even if we're disagreeing, we can still check on each other because the work that we're doing is really hard. And so I, yeah, I hope all of you check on your neighbors and check on your family and check on your friends, you know, because it's really important to have that support and for kindness. Unfortunately, Proposition 1 is taking a lot of money out of our mental health services in San Mateo County. So the next couple of years, we're going to be doing some really hard cuts and some really hard work to try to find the funding that we need to continue to do the mental health services that are being offered in San Mateo County. So please keep an eye on that and support anything that you can that uplifts mental health services. And I just want to thank the county of San Mateo.
Thank you. Christine.
There's often a stigma or a fear about getting mental health services, and I just want to clearly convey that there should not be. And we in leadership, Mary has been a great example of that in sharing some of her personal story. So I'm going to share mine right now. I actually started mental health therapy just last month for the first time in my life. I've been struggling with the council workload and my perfectionist tendencies that don't let me do less than my best, but with much more limited time available to me. And realizing some of that actually came from some childhood trauma that I've never dealt with. So finally, at age 60, I'm starting this hard work. And I just want to encourage you all, too, different times in your life, you know, you may not need it today, you might need it tomorrow or next week. Therapists are out there, they're great, they're so helpful in helping you process. Thank you.
Thank you. Sue. Okay. I want to thank Mary, too, and Mayor's Mental Health, because that did start with her and a couple of other mayors last year. And we'd like to continue on with Mayor's Mental Health and celebrate the month as Mental Health Month. And since the speaker has declined, we'll move on. And we have Claire Shum, Fire Inspector, North Coast County Fire Authority, with us. Please come to the podium and welcome. Thank you for being here, and I'll read the proclamation.
Thank you for having me.
I don't even think I need glasses. Proclamation of the City of Pacifica in recognition of Wildfire Preparedness Month, May 2024. I need glasses. Whereas in California, over 2 million homes are at risk of wildfire. And whereas last year, 7,127 wildfires burned 324,917 acres across the state. And whereas 90% of all wildfires are human-caused, human acts of carelessness result in wildfire disasters every year. And whereas each year, more people move into wildland urban interface areas, increasing the need to raise awareness among our citizens on how they can protect their property from wildfire losses. And whereas Genesis Project, formerly known as Zone Haven, has been adopted as a countywide tool to assist with informed evacuations during wildfire and encourage know your zone before an emergency arises. And whereas the North Coast, the North County Fire Authority encourages fire safe behavior by all those who live, work, and recreate throughout the City of Pacifica. And whereas each of us can do our own part to prepare for wildfire emergencies by taking steps to make effective changes to our homes and landscapes to reduce the risk of wildfire. And now, therefore, I, Sue Vodorlos, on behalf of the City Council, the City of Pacifica, and all of its citizens, do hereby proclaim May 2024 as wildfire prevent, glasses didn't help, wildfire preparedness month, and encourage all Pacifica residents to increase their knowledge and awareness of proper safety measures to protect themselves from the devastating effects of wildfires. Done this 22nd day of April 2024, Sue Vodorlos. And would you like to say a few words?
Just a few, if that's okay.
Yes.
Just thank you on behalf of North County Fire Authority. And just a reminder that Wildfire Awareness Day is May 18th. It's a Saturday in the community center parking lot. So know your zone, North County Fire will all be there, so if you have any questions, please feel free to drop by.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I did see at least one audience member holding their ear while you were speaking. If you could repeat the date of that event and the location directly into the microphone, that would be very helpful.
Sure. So Wildfire Awareness Day is Saturday, May 18th, in the community center parking lot from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m.
Thank you. Any comments from council? Go ahead.
Thank you for being here and for the importance of this proclamation. I wanted to actually announce to the public a couple of other events about fire hazards and insurance. There have been a lot of questions about insurance and knowing that a lot of insurance companies are pulling out of the state for fire risk. So this Thursday, April 25th, at the Hillsborough Town Hall, there's an insurance crisis meeting, 4 to 6, at 1600 Flora Bunda. I've also heard Josh Becker recently say that they're working at the legislative side to try to get insurance companies to recognize people that do wildfire mitigation and, you know, clearance around their homes as a possible discount to their insurance. So the people that are doing the right thing to prevent fires from spreading might be able to get some benefits from that. And then also Ray Muller's hosting event on April 29th at 6 to 8 at his coastside office that's called Recovery from Fire and Floods and the California Insurance Crisis.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Tiger.
I don't think it's possible to say thank you enough for those in the profession who are doing everything y'all can to keep us safe. So first of all, thank you. I was hoping you might go over Zone Haven a little bit more for us, tell us how it works, the best way for us to utilize the tool. And I know we've had fuel reduction programs, the chipping program, for example, coming around the community in the past. If you know of any upcoming programs of this nature or any other helpful tips around keeping safe, maybe the zones around one's house or whatnot, that would be great. Thank you.
Gotcha. I'm unaware of any of the dates for the chipping. I can check on that and get back to you. As far as just some of the tips, it's the, you know, the defensible zones. So usually it's from the house to 30 feet out, that's where you want to keep things the most clear, and then from 30 feet out to 100, so keeping trees limbed up, so no closer than 10 feet to your chimneys. You want to make sure that there's no ladder fuels, so making sure there's spaces in between, you know, the floor of shrubbery and your trees, so it's not going to catch no dead fuels, that kind of thing, near your house. There's more resources on our website at North County Fire Authority that can tell you exactly, and it can show you with diagrams, it's a little bit easier than me telling you. And then also, anybody who wants to discuss this in more depth, I would definitely encourage to stop by our booth on Wildfire Awareness Day. And then as for Zone Haven, they're definitely going to be there at Wildfire Awareness Day as well. Actually, as Mayor Vodorlos said, they're now Genesis Project, I believe, instead of Zone Haven, so it's know your zone. But it's an app that you can get information about if you need to evacuate ahead of time.
Is the app live now?
I have to check. So it should be.
Been chomping at the bed for the last couple of years to see a proper app, so that's great news. Thank you.
Okay, but let me check on that and I'll.
I can answer one thing about that. That if you type in Zone Haven, thank goodness, you can still get there because the word Genesis is spelled G-E-N-A-S-Y-S, not like you would expect to spell Genesis. So luckily, you can still type in Zone Haven.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. And would you like to, well, do we want to do the picture?
Sure.
Okay. Want to do a picture?
Sure, if you'd like to.
Okay. We'll hurry.
Oh, no. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
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 Anyone from the public like to speak on any of those items? I don't have any cards, but if you'd like to speak, or Emily, there's no one on the phone. So I'll bring it back to council. Thank you. Thank you, Christine. Our next item is the consent calendar. Since one item has been removed from the consent calendar, we have items one through four.
Mayor Vodorlos, before we consider the consent calendar, I just want to note a correction for item number three, which is the proposed resolution for the Economic Development Committee Charter. An administrative correction needs to be made to Exhibit A so that the content matches what's in the resolution. This is with respect to making a notation or making a correction in the membership item and the terms and general provisions item in Exhibit A. To state, consistent with the resolution, that the membership, the EDC, will be comprised of nine community members appointed by the city council plus one non-voting ex officio member as designated by the Board of the Pacifica Chamber of Commerce. And then under the terms and general provisions, this is where it would note that the city manager or designee shall serve as staff liaison to the EDC. At least one council member shall be appointed by the city council to serve as committee liaison. The exhibit had incorrectly noted that the staff liaison was a member of the EDC. So it's correcting that content to be consistent with the resolution language.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tiger.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For those who might be joining us a little later in the meeting, and as it is unusually starting early, I just wanted to remind those who are adjoining that number five resolution of intent to establish PTMD has been pulled for a later date, and so we're only looking at items one through four. And I have no interest in pulling any of the consent items, but I do have a comment on number three after public comment.
Okay. Would anyone else like to pull anything from consent? Seeing none. Are there any members of the public who'd like to speak on, anything on the consent Seeing none, are there any on the phone?
There's one raised hand for Sam Casillas.
Go ahead, Sam.
Sorry, I wanted to make a, is this for general comments or?
No, consent.
Okay, sorry. I'll lower my hand for right now.
Thank you. Okay, Tiger.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I said number three, I think it's actually number two. I just wanted to ask, it's about an alarm system for the new Civic Center buildings. Does that mean that the buildings are almost done being built, city manager?
We are closing in on completion of the Civic Center. And is that a sufficient response in terms of the detail?
Be as exuberant and excited as you'd like to be. I know I am certainly excited if we're actually coming to the finish line of that very long process.
We hit a major milestone a couple weeks ago with successful PG&E powering of the campus, and there's a lot of work still, a lot of details to still be undertaken, such as the alarm system and other aspects, and we are hopeful that we are close.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm happy to make a motion unless there's other. So I move the consent calendar items one through four with number three as amended by staff.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Please vote.
With the motion made by Councilmember Big Stick and seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Beckmeyer, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We're going to move along to public comments, items not on the agenda. This portion is available for public to address the city council on any issue not on the agenda. If items do not address matters within the subject matter, you will have a warning. Councilmembers shall not enter any debate with speakers under public comments on items not on the posted agenda. A maximum of three minutes will be allowed for any speaker. And we have, I don't know if that's, we have one card, Dinah Verbi. This is public comment for items not on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. It's been a while since I've actually been here in person. It looks great. Two things I wanted to address. One is the idea of putting on ballot measure for a city council item about on term limits. I just wanted to register my objection to doing that. I don't think this is a good time for it, given all the other pressing matters and budget deficit. And I'm speaking as one who is generally opposed to term limits, and I was actually opposed to the term limit initiative that did pass back in 2010 or 11, whenever it was. But this is a different time and a different era, and we have other pressing needs. And so I really hope that if this is going to be agendized, that you spend as little time as possible on it. The next item I'd like to address is the manner in which the council seems to now be doing commission and committee appointments. And I wanted to say I appreciate councilmembers' beer and bowls and their apologies at the last meeting for the way the planning commission nomination went down. I don't know if it was intentional or planned, but from our side of the dice, it was a very poor look for the council in nominating two people as a de facto slate and voting on those two people. It may have been legal, but it resulted in negative fallout for a couple of reasons. One is for all the people who volunteer and step in and fill out an application and go through an interview process, I believe they're owed the courtesy of at least having their name considered and discussed and feeling like they're in the mix and in the running. And secondly, the other negative fallout that I observed was one council member had to vote no, even though one of the nominees was one she wanted to support. And so I would suggest in the future, at least nominate people one by one. And actually, my preference would be to go back to the old system where every council member. every council member ranked all of the nominees in order of preference. And then, it was decided that way, and that way, every nominee felt that they had really been considered. So I'm just throwing that out for your future consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. So I have no more cards for public comment, but I believe there's one person on the phone.
It is for Sam Casillas.
Go ahead, Sam.
Hi. This is for the Beach Boulevard Resiliency Project. I would like clarification that this project is not being done to protect private residences, and that the city is not responsible for protecting private property from natural hazards such as erosion, flooding, storm surge, and landslides. It seems that there is a misguided opinion out there that the city is responsible for the protection of people's private property versus the city's responsibility for infrastructure, such as city buildings, streets, sewer system, et cetera. Additionally, has the city mapped out all the Isha and hazard zones that may be affected by this project? The city does not have to do an EIR in order to get an opinion from both the Federal Fish and Wildlife and USGS as to what are the maximum and minimum buffers for Isha and hazard zones. This obviously can also be applied to other projects. I am also concerned about the plan director's lack of knowledge as to what the definition of our current 1980 general plan is for commercial recreational, which in no way includes residential. As he stated last week, the CC has never approved the change of commercial recreational, changed to C2. Finally, I keep hearing city council members falsely state that the new revised sea level rise levels will in some way buy us more time. This is completely disingenuous. Many of these same council members were at the Pacifica Against the Sea Forum, where Gary Greggs stated that sea level rise is just one factor of the hazards that are already here. And, and in many ways, including Beach Boulevard, storm surge, erosion, flooding, shallow water tables, and soil composition, which is all sand and clay in Sharp Park, is what has and will continue to cause the most damage. Those sinkholes behind the sea level wall weren't caused by sea level rise. It was caused by the poor soil being compromised by underground springs, which we cannot control, and insurance companies and banks know this as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Anyone else? Seeing no one else, I'll bring it back to council. It is now time for council communications. We're going to have council communications very brief, only items that will be pertinent. I know, I'm trying. Just short comments, and then we're going to do more extended council communications after the meeting, or at the end of the meeting, before we adjourn. We're just going to move them.
I appreciate that, Mayor. I think the public will appreciate that as well in terms of the continued agenda item for tonight.
Okay. Tiger?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Keep it brief. Happy Earth Day, everybody, first of all. Put that out there. The state of the world always on my mind and always desiring peace. I attended CCAGs and Penn Division events, but mostly over the last couple of weeks. I was at the City Leaders Summit in Sacramento with a bunch of other electeds. The purpose of this event was to meet with both our local electeds on the state level and also state electeds we might not otherwise meet. There was a commenter a previous week that we seem reticent to pick up a phone to talk about issues. And while I may or may not at any given point think to pick up a phone, and I can't speak for the rest of you, I can tell you that last week I was in person talking to Sandra Becker, Assemblywoman Pappin, Assembly Member Berman, State Senator Weiner, also Gail Pellegrin, excuse me, Pellerin. She's new to me, so I'm learning her name. But aside from Assembly Member Pellerin, all of these are folks whom I talked about hot-button topics relating directly to Pacifica. The three big being VLF, HCD, and CCC.
Can you say what those stand for, please?
I apologize. Vehicle license fee tax, housing and community development, I had to remember which acronyms I was using, and California Coastal Commission. And it just so happened that the county version of League of Cities was up in Sacramento at the exact same time, so I got to say hello to our fellow county supervisor, Noelia Corzo, but I also got to say hi to Justin Cummings, who serves as a supervisor in Santa Cruz and happens to be the area representative on Coastal Commission for us. The other major thing I did was Progress Seminar. For those of you who are not aware of this, essentially, all of the electeds and thought leaders and Chamber of Commerce of San Mateo County is like transported for two days over to Santa Rosa. We get to meet one another and collaborate and learn from one another. Apparently, it's singular in the state. I have a lot of friends in Santa Clara County at this point, and apparently, San Mateo County is the only county that does anything like this, really trying to collaborate. I was really grateful to see Councilmember Bowles there for the first time, seeing the fullness of what is often referred to as the San Mateo County Way, and how that translates in real time. I also had the opportunity to speak with Catherine Stefani, who is one of the supervisors in San Francisco. Specifically, I was grateful for the opportunity to discuss with her things like our golf course and how one supervisor in San Francisco is viewing the land that they have in our community. I also had the opportunity to speak with Aaron Aknin with the Good City Company to get a direct update about how our housing element is going. And that actually bolstered my morale after talking to him, so I'll be happy to flesh that out at the other end of the session if we're, have more opportunity for communications. Thank you.
I'd like to thank you and Councilmember Bowles and Councilmember Vodorlos for devoting your personal time to going to the Progress Seminar. I've been to it before. As I recall, it involves departing midday on Friday, returning midday on Sunday, and doesn't involve sitting on this dais. So it's actually work on behalf of the city and the citizens of Pacifica for that period of time. So I find it a little bit more beneficial than picking up the phone. So thank you very much for, for investing your time in that.
Thank you.
I'm going to skip most of mine. I actually have some specific things about Progress, actually, all kinds of other events that I'd like to talk about at the end, but you asked just related to what we're talking about tonight. So after last Monday's meeting, and I, Spencer Potter spoke, who works for San Francisco and the Department of Park and Rec there, and I, we all like perked up, right? Because we were all really interested in hearing what San Francisco had to say about our LCLUP. And then later, he clarified that he was speaking on his own behalf. And so I decided to email the whole board of supervisors and the mayor of San Francisco, just to let them know what was going on and, and see if we might be able to get official input from them on, on our LCLUP. And so I got an email back on Friday when city manager Woodhouse was out of town. And my email was forwarded by the clerk to the, let's see, Sarah Madlin, the Director of Policy and Public Affairs, and Sarah, oh, maybe it's not Sarah. I think I missed, wrote her name. Ketchen, the Director of Property, and then Spencer Potter also attended. And I just want to say they were very grateful that I reached out and, and kind of gave them the synopsis of what was going on. And they will be doing their own research internally and, and also starting to look at the, the CDP for the, the berm at the Sharp Park Golf Course, which is coming up for renewal on, in 2027. So now's the time to start planning for that and deciding, you know, what they want to do. They, they did say that the struggle for them is that they manage a lot of properties, and, you know, their voters are obviously more interested in the properties in San Francisco than the one here. And so that's where their priorities are in terms of budget and, and work and so forth, unfortunately. But they do have an ongoing project now to improve the red-legged frog and garter snake habitat. So hopefully, we can learn more about that. And I'm hoping that this is a start of, of a little bit more cooperation and communication between, between our agencies.
I'll just go really quick. I want to thank the Pacific Beach Coalition for a wonderful Earth Day and Whale Fest. It was so awesome. And all the groups that came out to clean up our beaches and our streets. So thank you so much to the Pacific Beach Coalition. I also want to thank Pacific Coast Television, always, for all the work you do. They had a great open house that we got to attend. And I want to thank Suvarlas and Tiger for coming straight from the Progress Seminar to PCT. So thank you for that. And then we had a fundraiser for Coast Pride at Table Wine. So thanks, Table Wine, for doing that. It was great. We had a lot of fun. Hopefully, we raised a lot of money for Pacifica Pride. And then I just want to remind people that Blues and Brews is coming up this weekend, Saturday, the 27th, from 1:00 to 5:00, right out here between, on Palmetto, between Montecito and, what's the other one? Hilton. Thank you. Come on out. All proceeds go to Pacific Against Care.
And I'll save my comments to the end, except for one. Cliff Lawrence, thank you for delivering this poem to us, because it's really meaningful, especially for today. Be gentle with yourself. You are a child of the universe, no less than the trees and the stars, and you have a right to be here. One line in the poem. So thank you very much. It was something important for today. And I'll take it to staff communications.
Thank you, Mayor Vodorlos. Councilmembers, Kevin Woodhouse, city manager, I have just one communication I'd like to provide. And May is a month of many different recognitions, and I'd like to add one to that, in that May is also Small Business Month. And the City of Pacifica would like to recognize all of our small businesses that help make the city a unique community that we all enjoy. And as we know, small businesses support the local economy, employ local residents, encourage entrepreneurship, as well as youth entrepreneurship, engage in philanthropic and civic campaigns, and contribute to the vibrancy of the city. So during the month of May, we want to encourage all residents to shop local and show our appreciation to our local businesses, cornerstone of the community, and to use your Buy One, Get One, Shop Pacifica cards, which expire on May 12th, so use them before then. And Small Business Week is April 28th through May 4th. And as often happens, depending on the timing of council meetings with proclamations honoring, we'll, we'll do an off-cycle proclamation for the mayor to sign that can then be promoted on social media and through our economic development program to promote small business. So May is Small Business Month, in addition to all the other recognitions in May that are happening.
And there's one more. Wednesday is Administrative Professionals Day. So I'd like to thank all of our professionals, all of the administration, everyone who works for this city. Thank you all.
Madam Mayor, if I may, one thing I forgot, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, our planning director's birthday is tomorrow. So I just want to suggest to everybody that I'm sure there's no way he'd rather enter his birthday than the night's meeting. And if there's any way to throw one fewer stone or maybe be a slightly gentler, albeit with the fervency of passion that I'm sure we all share, please bear it in mind that overall, I think we have a lot of reason to be grateful for this human being's existence.
Thank you. And that closes the council and staff communications. There are no public hearings, and we're going to begin consideration. This is a continuation of the adjourned special meeting from August 15th, April 15th. Wow. See? See what happens? April 15th, 2024, modifications to the City of Pacifica's revised certification draft Local Coastal Land Use Plan, the LCLUP, including the Special Resiliency Area Policies, and more. So we have our planning director, Christian Murdock, and Stephanie Cervantes, senior planner, to prevent, to present the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, and Councilmember Big Stick for the early birthday wishes. Nothing better that to be reminded you're about to turn a year older. So thank you.
Sorry. I have one more comment I need to read before you start. While the request, sorry, glasses. While the required public comment period for this item was held during the special meeting on April 15th and is not required to hold a subsequent public comment period during the continuation of the adjourned special meeting, I recommend that we reopen the public comments on this item. Is there council consensus to reopen the public comments following the staff presentation?
Yes.
Yes? Yes?
Yes.
And yes. Okay. Thank you. You may proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening again, council. Planning Director Christian Murdock, joined with, joined by senior planner Stephanie Cervantes. We're here to continue the council's work to go through the long list of Coastal Commission suggested modifications and city staff alternative modifications in relation to the Local Coastal Land Use Plan or LCLUP update process that's been ongoing for some time. To briefly recap the April 15th meeting, the City Council conducted a review of chapters one through five, as well as the glossary, directed a number of changes that they would ultimately like to see come back in a potential final action on a transmittal of a revised document to the California Coastal Commission. And we're here tonight to continue review of the overall document focusing on Chapter Six, which was not completed at the April 15th meeting. The goal tonight is to finalize a list of alternative modifications. That's the term being used to describe changes to the document as it was recommended to be modified by the Coastal Commission back in March of 2023. Those March 2023 changes to the City Council's approved February 2020 Local Coastal Land Use Plan are referred to as Coastal Commission suggested modifications. Tonight, we're hoping to confirm the full list of alternative modifications that would be brought back at a public hearing subsequent to this meeting for final action and adoption of a resolution by the City Council, in order to transmit ideally by the early to mid-May timeframe, and then to allow a Coastal Commission hearing on certification of the city's LCLUP by the August or September 2024 timeframe. For purposes of tonight's discussion, you'll notice in the agenda packet for tonight, there weren't any attachments. So packet page references to specific content that might facilitate the discussion will likely be to the April 15th packet page references, just for the council and the communities' sake. So we are prepared as staff to bring up the list of Chapter Six line-by-line modifications whenever it pleases the mayor and council, depending on potentially when the council would like to take public comment. Thank you.
Would council prefer the public comment now, or questions? Public comment?
I don't have a, I don't have a press.
Okay. We'll do public comment. Dan Yance, followed by Joanne Gold and Jeff Giai.
Dan Yance, Wes Lindemar, thank you, City Council, for opening up public comment on this very important issue. And I say all of this with the utmost respect for everyone here. There's so much in this LCLUP that can be interpreted as a taking. From Section 6.1 with the removal of rights from the phrase "protection of property rights" to the glossary, where the entire definition of existing structures is deleted, this draft is ripe with language and policies that will lead to future litigations against the city. A San Mateo County judge found in favor of the property owners in the Casamira case upholding the longstanding interpretation upholding the longstanding interpretation that existing means at the time of the permit request. We should not be opposing that decision before the appeal process is complete. If it goes to the Supreme Court, the current justices will likely find in favor of property owners. It is a court that is interpreting constitutional rights from a very conservative view. On April 12th, they found in favor of the property owner in Sheets versus Eldorado. They determined the Takings Clause does not distinguish between legislative and administrative permit conditions. You're all familiar with how the Beechwood property case was judged to be a taking in almost bankrupt Hapman Bay. In Section 7.10 of the LCLUP's glossary, there's a removal of language from the Coastal Act Section 30212B2 that allows for the complete demolition and reconstruction of single-family residents with some restrictions. If my grandchildren can't rebuild our home, this would eventually be a taking. A deed restriction will make my house uninsurable and unsellable. The devaluing of my property so the state can buy it cheap would be a taking. There's language in this LCLUP that mentions the waiving of actual existing property rights. That is a taking. The phrases anticipated life and life expectancy clearly imply the adoption of a managed retreat policy. I want Beach Boulevard and Rockaway to have all the protections allowed by the original Coastal Act, but this current LCLUP would be devastating to the City of Pacifica and its wonderful people. Its adoption could result, probably, in many lawsuits against the city. Pacifica would not be able to survive one lawsuit as costly as the Beechwood property case, let alone hundreds. Please protect Pacifica and its wonderful people. Please do not approve this current version of the LCLUP. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Joanne Gold, followed by Jeff Gueye and Jennifer Belling.
Hi. I just wanted to follow up on a question that was asked by Councilmember Bowles at last week's LCLUP discussion. She had asked, why was commercial residential mixed-use proposed for the undeveloped San Pedro Avenue field? Councilmember Big Stick, I know you tried to recall what had gone on in the planning commission discussion, and you shared with us, you know, the answer had something to do with, you know, the number of units and how it had been reduced, and I know you were trying to remember, but with all due respect, you never really answered the question of why it had been CRMU, and I think we would all like to have an answer for that. The current designation of the San Pedro Avenue field is actually commercial recreational, RC2, and Christian provided some history on that last week as well. But the land use designation in the general plan update that most closely matches the designation of commercial recreation is actually low-intensity visitor-serving commercial, LIVC. And the land use designation that most closely matches the current state of the field is conservation, yet neither of these two were proposed for the field in the general plan update. Land use decisions affect the quality of life for the entire community, and they must be made without prejudice or bias for any individual owner. The owner of the San Pedro Field had purchased the property as commercial recreational land use, and he had and still has every opportunity to bring projects forward under that designation. Instead, for over the past 15 years, the owner has been lobbying the city to change the land use designation to residential in the hopes of making a greater profit. Unsurprisingly, the general plan update and the LCLUP both inexplicably redefine the land use for that property as commercial residential mixed-use instead of low-intensity visitor-serving commercial or conservation, despite a multitude of known and foreseeable hazards and conflicts with SEQA. So, the question still stands, why CRMU? Why does the council insist on making bad land use decisions with bias to an individual owner? And don't tell me it's because we need housing, because in allowing residential development on that property of any scale or volume, you're just creating a managed-retreat crisis for the next decade and putting people and property in harm's way. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Gueye, Jennifer Belling, and Mary Ann Osberg.
Hello, council. Mayor, thank you very much. I'm Jeff Gueye, Fairway Park resident for over 30 years. I urge city council to stick with the 2020 LCLUP that was sent in. This one is just broken on so many levels. Tonight, you're going to hear in Chapter 6, all of the regulations, the restrictions, the problems that are going to be caused to the residents, and what's going to happen to this city in the way of lawsuits. And in that discussion, you're going to have to look really closely to understand what's going on with it, but you're also going to have to read the tea leaves between the lines of what's going to happen. And I'm going to give you a fun fact. If your house is in the coastal zone and you have a kitchen fire, you're better off letting it burn to the ground than getting it put out, because if you put out that kitchen fire and fix it, you're an SSM. If you let it burn to the ground, you can have it replaced under the Coastal Act. There are so many reasons to wait on this. OPC's guidance is coming out in 43 days. We're saying we're using best available science, but we're using science from 2017. It's 46% lower sea level rise expected in 2024's guidance than it was in 2017. We need new maps. The maps that are being used are being told at the bottom of each map. It says it should not be used for policy or regulation purposes, but here we are using There was an amendment, there's talk about from staff that we should rush this through, we should get it done, and we'll do an amendment, okay, to the maps. But here's an example of why that's not going to work. Dana Point, in April of this year, last year, April 2023, filed for an amendment with the Coastal Commission. It had to sit for three months while there was public comment developed during that time, and at the end of 90 days, they extended it for another year. No one's going to listen to this thing until June. In the meantime, public comment is reopened, and things just don't move fast. We have to work with the Coastal Commission. Why would we rush this through when we have the best available science coming out? It just doesn't make sense. The SRA concept is wrong. It's broken. You can't fix it with this. SRAs are giving, allowing the people who have rights under Coastal Act 30235. Am I out of time?
You are. Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Jennifer. And then Mary Ann Osberg, and Richard Harris.
Good evening, everyone. This is my first time speaking, and I am newer and not well-prepared, but I did want an opportunity to thank you for these conversations and to give you my vote no. My vote no on the LCLUP, and urge all of you to do the same. There are so many points and comments I have to make, but I want to do it at another time when I'm a little more prepared. Just historically, I understand, Pacifica came together as little communities and said, wouldn't it be great to come together as one city where we can share resources and support one another? And so, I am shocked and amazed that there's this division going on to not support the coast. And, you know, I see these signs here, Pacifica stands united in love and against hate, and I would not say that's not what I'm getting. I'm a West Sharp Park resident. I have an eight-unit apartment building in West Sharp Park. I'm in the business of providing affordable housing for others, and you are threatening my business, as well as ability to be able to provide housing for others and enjoy this fabulous town that we have together. So, I'm just going to close it off from there and look forward to being more poignant next time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Ann Osberg, Richard Harris, Cliff Lawrence.
Good evening, Mayor Vado Las, city council and staff. My name is Mary Ann Osberg, and I have 28 units of affordable housing here in Sharp Park, Pacifica. My family has run a mom-and-pop property management business since the 70s here. So, I grew up here as a kid, grew up on Pedro Point until I was about eight, moved over to the other side of the hill, couldn't wait to get back. I live in the neighboring town, but I consider Pacifica home. And I just want to start off by, Mayor Vado Las quoting the poem that Cliff Lawrence, I guess, gave you guys about, "You have the right to be here." How fitting. I think all of us as residents, property owners, homeowners, tenants, business owners, we all have the right to be here. And I'm really struggling, and I'm concerned with the disconnect between, I'm seeing the conservative side and the, you know, more of the lefty environmental side. I struggle with that because I'm right in the middle. I don't know about you guys, but I think all of us are here because we love nature, whether you're a super-environmentalist or, you know, running a, I don't know, Fortune 500 company. We're here because we love this town, we love the ocean, we love the community. It's so diverse. I mean, it's amazing. So, I'm struggling with, you know, comments from the last meeting about the city is not responsible for private property rights. Hearing calls in that, you know, the city is not responsible for private property rights by someone who's actually a homeowner, so that's very concerning to me. So, we're here because we love this city, and I don't want it torn apart. I hope you vote no. I hope you cancel this LCLUP and not move forward with the Coastal Commission's overreach. Stick with the 2020 LCLUP. There's ways that we can work together as a community, whether you're on whatever side you're on, to make this community amazing. Someone just threw out to me about Kelp restoration. We're having a problem with Kelp right now. Mangroves, there's other options that we can look at, that we can be creative with, that we can help, you know, make the city thrive, bring in jobs. So, again, you know, as you know, I've had issues with lending in the past. This is only going to exacerbate lending issues, insurance issues. Where are my tenants going to go? Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Harris, Cliff Lawrence, and Robin Rineals.
Good evening, council and staff. I'm Richard Harris. I'm with the San Francisco Public Golf Alliance. I'm a resident of San Francisco. I've given you several letters addressing issues, including what is an incorrect definition of environmental justice in the glossary section of the current draft. And I've given you corrective language referring extensively to Coastal Commission's environmental justice policy. Request that you look at that carefully. That is one of the items that's coming up this evening. On Issue 6.2, the Coastal Act policies, I've given you a request to submit where the language says policies focus on protecting beaches and the natural shoreline. This is the Coastal Commission. It reflects the coastal zone, and there are many coastal resources apart from beaches and the natural shoreline. Access is one. Low-cost recreation is another. Reasonably-priced housing is another. And there are many that I've specified in the language in the letter that I gave you from the Coastal Commission. So, inserting at that point should be sensitive and significant coastal resources, including but not limited to beaches and shoreline. There is another one on tonight's list, which is the Sharp Park Golf Course. And in the draft that the city has given you, the golf course is omitted from that. The golf course is low-cost public recreation, and to omit that from the section, the golf course from the section that relates to the golf course would be for the city to impliedly say, you don't care about the golf course. You have a history of writing letters to the Coastal Commission advocating for the golf course. And this is not the time to allow an implication by omission that you don't care about it. And I've given you that point in my letter. And that covers it. I've given you also, there are a couple of new laws that I gave you a letter on today.
Thank you, Richard.
Very important.
Thank you. Cliff, and then Robin.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, City Council. My name's Cliff Lawrence. The first concern I want to raise tonight is, on social media, I'm being made aware of disinformation about our topic this evening. I think a lot of undue concern is being stirred up in part of our community. We need some help from you, or I don't know how best to solve the problem like that, but we need to get good information out and have a place where there is good information so that we can counter misinformation. That said, one of the things I have seen over the time is that we all struggle trying to sync the various required documents that we deal with. The general plan, LCLUP, whatever. We have to keep miking little adjustments to try to get one back in step with the other. So, with that in mind, if there actually is some new guidance that's coming out and some new maps, would it be worth our while to take a step back, try to incorporate the best science that we can, and to make this the best document we can, and reduce the number of times that we have to keep going through these cycles? I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Robin?
Good evening, council. I'm Robin Rineals, Sharp Park resident, property owner since 1976. I really believe that we need to go back to the 2020 LCLUP. Don't adopt what's in front of you tonight. It's not fair. It's not equitable to everybody that lives within the coastal zone. SRAs cannot just be for West Sharp Park and for Rockaway, because there are so many more property owners and homes and businesses in Pacifica that are protected by existing shoreline protection, rock rivement, whatever it is, even the homeowners on Shoreview providing their own. Don't rush to adopt this. Please do not do it. Under Coastal Act 30235, where allowed existing structures with existing protection, SRAs will only allow, in this document, West Sharp Park and Rockaway, not others with existing shoreline protection. This is unfair and not legal. The Coastal Commission is setting you up. They're mandating this type of movement and this type of policy for these areas. You bear... You bear the liability for it. So, will anybody else in, in any of the coastal cities that do something like this? And you're seeing it already, you're hearing about the lawsuits already, starting to come up. The LCLUP can't be fixed. I urge you not to adopt it. To let these other cities, let, wait, let the other cities, let wealthier cities that are also dealing with the same issue, let them go first. See what happens. See what it is that they're able to get, do, and what it ends up being for all of us in the coastal zone. Because this is not fair to Fairway Park, it's not fair who is protected by a levy, it's not fair to the Shoreview neighborhood, for instance, who's protected by rock reviment, and it's not fair to any of the other property owners that have existing shoreline protection that are not in this document as SRAs. And it's, it's really ironic that this is coming up during Mental Health, Mental Health Awareness Week, Month, actually, because for those of us living in the coastal zone, this is a slow-moving disaster for us and for our futures and for our families and our businesses here. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any additional cards. Do, I do. Cindy, come forward.
It's true, you don't have the card yet. It's back there.
It's coming.
Cindy Abbott, West Sharp Park. I'd like to reiterate what Cliff Lawrence just shared about a lot of information that we've even heard, heard here tonight in public comment of people not being clear on what's going on. It does take a bit to understand. I've been following and taking part of this for over 12 years. So, if you've not been following along and if you come in late, it's hard to understand. And I think it would be really helpful if City Council and City staff would make a much deeper attempt to clarify things. We tried to do that the other, other day with the meeting, that was questions and answers, but it's clear there's still a lot of misinformation or misunderstanding about what's being proposed. For example, we just heard that the California Coastal Commission is trying to force special resiliency areas on the city of Pacifica. Nothing could be more inaccurate. I believe that that was created here, and some members of staff have talked about the novel idea that the city of Pacifica has proposed called special resiliency areas. Similar such setups have been denied by the California Coastal Commission, such as special shoreline protection exemption, exemption areas that had been proposed by Santa Cruz County and were denied fully by the entire Coastal Commission. So, I think it's a really good comment and a pause here that we do need to do that. There's significant and justifiable concerns here from the community. So, let's maybe try to take time out after your meeting tonight, when you continue to go through Chapter 6, but to really clarify all these things are coming up. Who's making these decisions? Who's presenting them? Is it an outcome from the local coastal cities working group and their neighborhood adaption things? But to say that the Coastal Commission is forcing SRAs on the city of Pacifica is one that I really do think needs to be clarified. And we really need to think about that last-minute attempt to toss those into the plan that had been worked on for so long. And as I have 30 more seconds, another thing that doesn't seem to be clear is that the 2020 version, which was transmitted to the Coastal Commission, did not have unanimous community support. That was changed after a change in City Council. It did not reflect the entire ideas of the community. In fact, it took out a lot of things that had been worked on for years. So, again, let, let's kind of set the record straight on a number of things. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Emily, are there people on the phone?
62 degrees coming.
Oh, sorry. Will you fill out a card?
I'm dragging myself in. Thank you. So, I want to commend Cliff for branching, and Cindy that too. As leaders, let's be careful not to divide our community. The Coastal Commission was, you know, set up by unanimous vote, well, I wouldn't say unanimous, but a, a large vote of the public. And that is the vote of the public. Some of us are still alive and still, you know, we worked very hard for something that we felt was fair to everybody. And it's difficult when you start saying an agency is doing something wrong, or they're bad, or they're this, or they're that. If we really think an agency is bad, we should lobby and go for it and clean it up. But we're in the midst of very serious issues for our own local stabilization and, you know, I think we need to keep it really clear. And if we don't think the facts are somewhere, dig up the real facts. And as many have said, you can dig up facts to fit your own position. Well, probably true. But when you have enough people digging up their facts that they think true, and the real true is in there somewhere, you know, that's where your decision powers and your research powers and some kind of a blessing I think we get when we're in leadership. A blessing we have if we actually call upon it, where you can sit back and be reflective and you put aside your own biases. And let's face it, I mean, I think everybody has a bias, if, or you're not human. But it, it really concerns me that when something, the vote of the people, that you somehow can bash it or sidestep the vote of the people. If there's an issue, this particular issue is huge, it should be taken back to the people, and there should be data, and it should be strong data. And I don't think now's the time to bash anybody, no matter what their opinion is. Thanks.
Thank you. Now, Emily.
There are three raised hands. The first is for Kimberly Williams.
Go ahead, Kimberly.
Hi, thank you, Mayor Vado Las and Council members. I'm Kimberly Williams, representing the local San Mateo County Chapter of Surf Rider Foundation. Our chapter continues to support the Coastal Commission's recommendations for Pacifica's LCLUP, and we ask the city to reconsider the path it is pursuing with this draft, which includes the creation of special resiliency areas and rewriting commonly-understood definitions. Surf Rider opposes the SRAs as not compatible with the law, the California Coastal Act. And as you've heard from residents, this carve-out concept is also substantially inequitable on several levels for residents and for visitors. As was raised at the April 15th meeting, the current proposed draft already seeks to decrease public access to Pacifica's coastal bluffs and beaches. It is unfortunate that the draft has also confused the public and introduced fear over private property rights and directed blame to the Coastal Commission when it is the city who has introduced these issues and inequities. It feels like SRAs are red herring. This draft doesn't serve the future of Pacifica and its residents. And I want to add here that since it comes up so very often and was again mentioned at the April 15th meeting, that Smart Coast is an organization representing realtors and developers that promotes their specific agenda, and they seem to have some influence over Pacifica's policy development, given the frequency with which they are referenced in City Council meetings. Also evident at last week's meeting, the city's rewriting of definitions in this LCLUP is already difficult to decipher and would create a significant impediment to communication with local and state agencies and organizations who rely on common definitions to navigate and collaborate on projects, funding opportunities, and climate change-related issues. These are all very concerning, and putting people up front is important, but not just a few people. All residents of Pacifica should be equally valued and public resources protected for everyone. We shouldn't trade our beaches for a park bench on a concrete slab. We all are going to continue to see stronger and more frequent storms and flooding, and an LCLUP that can guide responsible infrastructure decisions in Pacifica is critical. There is no perfect solution to the dilemmas we are facing, but there are ways to approach them with long-term planning to nurture the coastline while ensuring Pacifica has a more resilient future, both environmentally and financially, to preserve the beauty and the culture of this place, as I've said before, and to do right by the long-term residents whose properties will eventually be impacted. Having an LCLUP in place that meets Coastal Commission requirements would put Pacifica on a path to smarter solutions that benefit everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
The next raised hand is for Marie Swan.
Okay, go ahead.
If, if the Coastal Commission didn't, since they allowed these properties to be built after they were established in 1972, they, they do have a responsibility. If they wanted to not have these built back then, that would be one thing, but the properties were allowed to be built, people allowed to buy them and move into them and live in them, and now they're our homes, and now they're saying like, "Well, I don't know about this, you know, maybe, you know, maybe we don't have to worry about you guys." And then, it also seems to me that some of this, you know, is becoming the antithesis of inclusion. Okay, so, Pacifica prides itself in inclusion, but we're now going to have a, an us and that, and them and those guys and these guys, because some people want to, you know, I mean, we all are homeowners or live in homes if we're not owners of them, and we all deserve the same protections. And, and I think that would be, you know, the best course for Pacifica and the Coastal Commission is to, you know, protect us all. That's it.
Thank you.
The next raised hand is for Nikali.
Go ahead.
Hi, Council members. Today, I'm asking you to give the community more time. That's the one thing I've heard from most speakers at today's meetings and most speakers at last meeting. When I started joining these meetings, I really was hoping to get some clarity and understanding, and I find myself even more confused than I was before. And that, to me, again, just says, "We need more time." You, better than anyone, knows how long it takes to draft legal documents, and while these are amenable, that doesn't mean that we should rush into a decision or rush into an agreement. And when you're making a business decision, if it feels really rushed, it's probably because one side wants to get an upper hand in one way or another. So, I really, really implore that you just give yourselves more time and give the community more time to make the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have two additional raised hands. The next is for Linda Acosta.
Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Linda Acosta. I am a resident of West Fairway. I urge you not to adopt the LCLUP as it stands. It is inequitable, and it is unfair. I urge you to remove the SRA concept and treat all residents, homes, and businesses equally under the Coastal Act. Do not concede our rights or require restrictions that force us to give them up to the Coastal Commission. City Council, please represent all Pacifica residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
The last person lowered their hand, so there are no raised hands.
Okay. Seeing no more.
There is another raised hand.
Okay.
It is for Amber Waters.
Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Amber Waters. I'm a home, homeowner of, in West Fairway Park, and I really appreciate the comments of other homeowners really trying to express that there, it, it's a feeling of fear as a homeowner and a resident when I talk to fellow homeowners, people talking about moving the area, what's going to happen, this is our livelihood. Something so, so personal that we've all worked so hard for our homes, especially in, you know, such an expensive places where we do live, that any movement towards rushing, pushing through a policy that could hurt, hurt Pacifica's citizens and everything that we've built, and I can't imagine that the City Council would just take our livelihoods so lightly. And so, I really hope at the end of tonight's meeting that you do not go through with the current state of the LCLUP, and please, please consider and really look at this as individual, individual people, not just, not just broad policy. These are people's businesses, these are people's homes, children, lives. Thank you.
Thank you.
There is an additional raised hand for Summer Lee.
Go ahead, Summer.
Hi, this is Summer Lee. I just want to echo some of the great comments tonight about that the Coastal Commission was not the inventor of this SRA policy. And I think that it would be great if the city could clarify some of the information that's been going around the community that is causing a lot of fear and divisiveness and threatens to stall out a lot of work and a long process that's been over 10 years. And I, I was recounting Rosanna Sheehan's amazing book talk, for those who were able to go, and she really sees this from a really philosophical and beautiful place that I think is the place that could unite us in Pacifica. And one of the big questions she asks is, "What is the role of our government in this, you know, sea level rise and coastal erosion era? And what is the role of government for protecting the, the public access to resources like beaches and such? And what is the government role for protecting private property rights? And whose private property rights?" And I think some of those questions are worth answering and thinking about as a community, and then going from there. So, thank you.
Thank you.
There are no other raised hands.
Seeing no other hands, I will bring them back to Council, and we'll continue with moving forward.
Thank you, Mayor. So, shifting now into the line-by-line document, I do want to remind the Council, in the event that we go back to the public recreation chapter, there was a typo in PRI 24 related to the Sharp Park Golf Course. That should read, "Support the continued operation of golf at Sharp Park Golf Course, consistent with CDP terms and conditions, and support development of additional recreational uses in upland portions of the park located outside the coastal zone east of Highway 1." So, now, shifting to Attachment B, starting at Chapter 6.
Hold on one second. Christine, did you?
I'm just trying to look for it, so I can, I can work up on my packet what you just said. So, PRI 24, but, sorry, can you, can you just repeat that?
Can you go back? Can you go back to it so we can see it?
Sure.
Thank you.
So, that's on the April 15th packet pages 22 and 23, and then in Attachment B, and then also it's mentioned Attachment G, packet page 131.
Just to Richard Harris's comment, we are, we are saying we're supporting the continued operation of golf at the golf course here.
That's Staff's recommended alternative modification, yes.
But the Coastal Commission also said that in their suggested modification.
Right, that's what the Staff is recommending that the document include.
Okay.
So, beginning here, I believe last time, Mayor Vado Las, you guided the Council through and sought to determine whether there was an interest in discussing each line as we progressed through. So, Staff is here to facilitate that with information or responses to questions.
Okay. So, we begin on page 31.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
I, I heard some comments that it might be a good idea for us to actually read some things so people can understand it a little bit. So, I, because I know last time, because we've seen the documents so many times, we kind of went through it like, "Okay, I'm okay with that one, I'm okay with that one," but it might be a good idea to actually read them. I don't know what my colleagues think, but...
So, Councilmember Beer, what, what are you proposing? Be read all of the, the boxes in the chart or just the proposed modification, the draft alternative modification? alternative modification?
I just think we have to be as clear as we possibly can be. And so I don't think we can be that clear if we're not actually reading what's in the chart and talking about it. And so I find that last time, we, like I said, we went ahead and said, "Okay, we, we agree with this, we agree with this." But what exactly were we agreeing on? There's people at home who don't have the documents, like, I don't know. I just think we need to be as clear as we can. And so any way that we can do that, I would appreciate it. And I did not answer your question.
So it sounds like you want to read the city's certification draft text, the CCC suggested modification, and then the draft alternative modification.
I think if, if we're going to be talking about making changes, then we need to read it through.
Okay. So does a majority of the council support that recommendation?
Or do you have another idea, perhaps?
And Mayor, just for your meeting management, there are 14 pages of Chapter 6 modifications to get through. I was thinking about the, the time management for this particular item.
Thank you.
And Mayor, I think as we went through the chart last week, we often would read the suggested change as well as staff would explain the, you know, summary or reason for the modification. And so there may be some that they're very lengthy, the city certification draft, the suggested modification, but then there's just one sentence that is the edit. And I think as we go through each one, the council should just be clear about, are we sufficiently summarizing and/or reading? And if not, we'll read more specifically. If that, if that works, I mean, I think it can be, you know, line by line, just to make sure that it's clear what is the alternate modification that's being suggested and why, and any specific wording that we're talking about.
You have a, you know, may I have permission to just speak for a minute?
Go right ahead.
Like, I'm in this place where I want to say something, and what exactly I want to say isn't clear to me to begin with. I feel like I'm mired in a process that is bereft of clarity, no matter how deeply into focus we would wish to bring it on any given one of these points. I feel like for 15 years' worth of a document that's in front of us, it is a buffet of legality to be interpreted for the next 40 years as our last LCP has been interpreted for the last 40 years. I feel like a lot of what's being asked from us by Coastal Commission is born of circumstances that could not have been fathomed more than 40 years when the Coastal Act was first put forth, and now we're trying to grapple with that. And then I feel like there are many, many homeowners in town who are trying to make heads or tails of what another organization is trying to make heads or tails out of. And I feel like I am in a position, and perhaps we are in a position, in which certainly there's no comfort, and maybe there's no happiness, and I feel like I need to express that because of the many elephants in the room I alluded to last time. That's probably the humdinger before us. So in terms of the question of how we should best grapple with any given one of these points for the benefit of our, of our community, I feel like it's up to any given one of us to do whatever due diligence we feel is right to ask the questions that bring us clarity. I don't know that we need to read line by line through anything, or perhaps we should read line by line through everything, but I think that as those questions naturally occur to us, that's how we do it. And that's what I have to start by saying.
And just, and just one thing. I mean, I, I really want to acknowledge all the comments tonight and the letters that we've been given, and, and even some of the information on social media that, you know, I agree, there's some that's just not correct, that there is confusion in the public. I mean, even we ourselves are still trying to sort out and make sure we understand it. And I think we're going to have a greater job of trying to explain this to the community, you know, as we go. You know, there, there were questions raised that we got today that actually make me want to go back and look at a policy we looked at last week also. And so, you know, I'm not opposed to continuing to go through this, we lay all our questions on the table, but I, but I do think we need a little bit more careful, you know, review and answering and, and make sure we're educating people because, yeah, I mean, fear is not what any of us want, right? We, we all love this community, we don't want anyone's property to suffer, you know, we want to protect our environment too, you know, it's our homes, like you said, our homes here, you know, as, as our houses and our home here as our city and environment. So I think, I think we're all on the same page with the ultimate goal, and then it's the steps in between and what we can agree to.
I'd say that this is one of the most difficult things that I've ever done on council. This is my eighth year. I was here for the 2020 local coastal plan. I was more comfortable then than I am now because, for some reason, as much as I read and read and read and read, I don't ever feel prepared. I get the comments from the community. I feel like no one wants anything, everyone is against us, and we're trying here. We're doing our best to do the right thing, and it's really hard, really, really hard. I could go on and on, and I won't.
I also think it's, it's really telling when we have folks, so this has always been a divisive issue, as long as I can remember. I was afraid to go to the meetings at the, at the community center. So it's always been divisive, so, but I also find it telling that folks on each side of the issue are just, are agreeing that they don't, that they don't agree with us. And so I think we really need to take that into consideration because that doesn't happen very often in our community, where we have folks go, "You know what? This is not right, this is not right." And so, anyway.
I agree. And I'm going to take issue with something council member Bowles said, "We're all on the same page." I completely disagree with that statement. We aren't anywhere near on the same page. And the characterization of the 2020 LCLUP as something the community agreed on and from public comment tonight, no, we didn't. I agree with the point of view that not everybody was happy with that final document, but it was a compromised document, and it was something that we could live with, and it was something that we brought forward. And we have been presented with a complete red line of that in a way that hasn't been explained to the community except to say, "Because the Coastal Commission won't approve it." And that, to me, isn't sufficient. We're trying to come up with something that they would approve, looking, as we received public comment and a reference to the Santa Cruz County Coastal Commission process, where they brought forward the same difficult kinds of issues that we're bringing forward in this document, and the commission was like, "We're not here to help you figure this out, that's not our role." And yet, the information we get from the community is, "Put it forward to the commission. Let them be the ones to tell us what to do." We can't do both. And this is an inefficient and extremely unsuccessful process right now. So I haven't been able to come up with a suggestion for how to make it better. I, I'm struck by council member Big Stick's references to the many elephants in the room. Perhaps boiling down what those are would be beneficial. And as I look at this chart before us right now, the first, I mean, I couldn't even tell as I was, I was trying to remind myself in the very first policy in Chapter 6, 6.1, what even got changed. I couldn't even tell until I closely read the paragraphs in the first two columns. And what got changed, if I'm not mistaken, and I might be, is the sentence, "Protection of property rights is an important theme in this chapter." That was struck by the Coastal Commission. We've heard from last week, council member Bowles brought forward a question to the city attorney to please clarify, is it the responsibility of the city to protect private property? And the city attorney said, "No, it is not." To the chagrin and disgust and fear and revulsion of so many in the audience who think this city council is here to take care of them. When, when council member Beer and I were running, at the same time, we were talking about language, and I will never forget, one of the days when we were at Sharp Park Golf Course, and I was making a very, you know, moderate position about we have to protect property, and we have to protect infrastructure, and we have to protect, you know, businesses and homes, and Mary just said, "We have to protect the people." And what is happening here is we are tearing apart the people.
Again.
Again! And that just is not okay. So I don't know what the right way to do this is, but the way it's going isn't great. I've heard everything from, "Well, you shouldn't be doing this because Mercury's in retrograde." And I'm all, "Tell me what that means again?" And the person who said it to me said, "Well, it means there's lots of difficulties with communication, and big decisions shouldn't be made." I'm like, "Check, check." So I guess I'm interested in learning more about what that means now. I just, I mean, it's, it's, we have to laugh because we'll cry, as I was doing most of the afternoon. I agree with one of the commenters about how ironic, and that's exactly the word I wrote down, how ironic it is that this is mental health month. Because it is affecting my mental health working on this. I know it's affecting the mental health of constituents because they've told me. So I agree with you 100%. You've been here two years longer than I have, and, three years longer than I have, and this is the dead hardest thing we've ever done. And every time the hardest thing we've ever done hits us, I go, "Nothing could be worse than this." Guess what, folks? This is worse than everything else we've ever done, at least for me. So, you know, some would say, when everybody's mad at you, you know you're on the right track because nobody gets 100% of what they want. But right now, I feel like everybody would say, "I'm getting 0% of what I want." I hear the Coastal Commission is foisting SRAs upon us, I hear the City of Pacific is foisting SRAs upon the Coastal Commission. In truth, there has been discussion about neighborhood approach to trying to address these very difficult issues across the state for years. So this suggestion that somehow Pacifica has created this is nuts. I'm here to say, folks, Pacifica didn't create this. It was called a different name, it's been discussed in the theoretical possible, which is a great way to discuss ideas. We're trying to discuss something in the theoretical possible, but let's apply it to the city. And that's just, for me right now, it doesn't feel like a successful process. So I'm asking myself, is it worth going through this line by line, by line, by line, by bloody line? Because in the end, are we going to have, are we going to be any further along? Are we going to be any closer to agreement? And I, I really don't feel like we are.
Yeah.
Which really, really bothers me because, let me tell you, I walked into being on city council with a goal of getting the LCLUP updated. How could we possibly be a city that takes ourselves seriously with a LCLUP that is 44 years out of date? How could we possibly be a city that could take ourselves seriously with a general plan that is 40 years out of date? And so the, you know, we're getting to the hard part, the hardest part of all, and I don't know if we're going to be successful. So, you know, you said, may I speak freely, oh, sorry, I jumped right on you on, on speaking freely because.
Yeah.
That's where I am, you know? I don't, I don't feel like anybody's happy. I find it really disturbing and bothersome when people remind us that we are the elected representatives of this community, and half of the people that call in and chide us don't live here and are representing the interests of lobbying groups, and then calling out the interests of other lobbying groups that are referenced by this city council. Oh, no. This city council has not referenced any lobbying group and brought them in to this process. On the contrary, I personally have sought not for that to happen. So don't even try to tell me that we are kowtowing to real estate interests. That is absolutely BS. So we've been struggling to provide a fair, balanced, even, public process. The community is telling us, "Ain't working for me," probably to a person in this audience. I don't, I don't know what you suggest, because I'm not hearing any suggestions. I'm just hearing accusations, I'm hearing criticism, I'm hearing how bad and terrible and wrong our staff is, how awful this document is. My opinion is, we should set it aside. We should park it and perhaps take some time to be successful, to be a successful city for a while. Let's get something done that we need to get done because this is holding us up and tearing us apart at the same time. That's what I have to say.
Through the mayor. So since you asked, you referenced the two major elephants I'm staring at, and one is, you know, what happens? What happens if we stop? What happens if we abandon? And that's a question that I definitely have written down for staff. But before getting to that area, you brought up where SRAs come from. And forgive me if I'm mistaken, you strike me as the most likely person on this dais. Do you have deep insight into exactly what the neighborhood carve-out strategy that has been worked on by the Coastal Cities Group, I think, and thought in collaboration with some of the Coastal Commission members and the Coastal Commission staff?
Yes.
And so my question to you is, comparing what your experience has been in actively working on that notion as something that could be a tool to help cities to work, I think collaboratively with Coastal Commission? I'm getting it in real time as we're trying to communicate that out to our community and figure out what that could mean for Pacifica, not looking overly successful. And so here's a mental trick for you. If you're able to pull out just what that policy is, what it's trying to accomplish, does it jibe with what the Coastal Cities Group has been suggesting? Is it on par? Is it on track? Because I, I feel like that's something not at that table as directly as you are that I need clarity on from somebody who's been at that table for, I think, years now.
What I can say about it is that, as I stated before, it's been an abstract theoretical conversation, not trying to apply to any specific city and any specific instance. But the, the area it was trying to address is the very real situation when you have properties of different ages, if you will, that, as we've heard so much tonight and at other times, are, have a right to protection under the Coastal Act because they existed before the act was passed. Precoastal is the phrase that's used. So when you have areas like we have in Sharp Park, where you have almost every property, for example, on Beach Boulevard, is precoastal, but not. for example, on Beach Boulevard, is precoastal, but not everyone. So some would be entitled or had protection for, I mean, the right to protect. If there is any sort of shoreline protection, armoring in place, they have the right to keep it and maintain it. But the guy next door to them, who maybe wasn't there precoastal, doesn't have such rights. And how inconsistent and wacky that is, because you can't have like, here's a seawall, except for right here, there's not a seawall. And then here's a seawall, except for right here, there's not a seawall. And so at, to the issue of, "Yeah, but those seawalls aren't supposed to be protecting private property." Well, if private property receives protection under the reality that some of this armoring is protecting critical infrastructure, they, the commission understands that. They recognize that. But what they have not sought to do is allow for that. So they've constantly gone back to this, "Yeah, but for any future development you want to do, you have to analyze it as if that protection wasn't there." Which is very nutty, because it is there. So it's like you're trying to live in two weird worlds. And I think the intent in the discussion was like, "Okay, it is there. What does that look like? How could we allow for certain areas, because of their unique circumstance, that armoring to be part of the calculus?" And that is where the basis of the SRA concept came from. So how did they envision it playing out? I'll bet you're not like this. And that's the reality of trying to take a theoretical and apply it to a specific situation with specific individuals who own property, with specific individuals who are taxpayers, with specific individuals who put five different people in these chairs and expect them to take care of every one of their specific issues and needs. And so what we've got to do is come up with compromise. We've got to come up with a baseline of agreement. And we're not doing that.
When I think, it's because for me, I don't, I don't see the holistic view of the entire coast side. Like, I don't, I don't have a vision of what that is with this SRA and this, like, I, I feel like we need to step back and really look at, "Okay, well, what does that mean for Manor and Esplanade and Shoreview?" And, you know, so I, I feel like I don't have those answers, and maybe I just haven't asked the right questions yet. But I just don't, I don't have that holistic view of the entire city coastline.
Yeah. And the reality that different physical challenges affect different parts of that coastline, whether it's bluff erosion, whether it's sea rise, the threat of sea rise flooding, how do we address these, all of these myriad different issues in the different parts of town? Right? So that's part of the conversation. But what we're hearing clearly from the community is there, you know, this is a piece to take back to Coastal Cities Group, Local Government Working Group, the coastal staff and commissioners that participate in these conversations. It's not well-received. There's a lot of fear. There's a lot of perception, and why wouldn't there be, that it's unfair? There's no equity in it. And, you know, we've heard many times from many people, I've been on a couple of Zooms about this thing we refer to, our neighborhood voices. There are, we heard tonight about upholding the Coastal Act that was voted in and is a reflection of the will of the people. And in, so, you know, what I'm hearing is, don't tinker with it. Don't try to interpret it. Don't try to come up with other ways. There are already policies in the Coastal Act itself that take care of those things. And so what we have to figure out is, what is the upshot for this community? What does that mean for this community?
Did we go backwards to 1976, when they started to develop the Coastal Act and finished in 1977? I mean, we're talking about our local coastal plan and our general plan that are from the 80s, and how outdated everything is. And the Coastal Commission goes back to the 70s. Things change. These things that we all have, think about how that was in 1976. I, I don't know either.
So I hear you saying we have to modernize, we have to deal with the realities that are facing us today.
That are facing us today, not in 1976.
And the other area that, you know, this, we heard tonight, and we heard last week, and I agree with the position that best available science. Our document isn't based on that. Our document's based on the most, one step ago, best available science. And so we, our document says, "It is based on the best available science," but it's not true. Now, would it be updated? Would we amend it, including, and when OBC adopts the da-da-da? Yeah. But are we perhaps trying to adopt something before that's available? That maybe we should be waiting for that to be available? We've discussed, I mean, that's been thrown out?
Yeah.
We haven't debated that. We haven't discussed that. We haven't deliberated that. We've heard from the public on that. It's something we need to think about.
Yeah. And, and that's something I'm certainly willing to consider. And I, and then, and in light of what we're hearing from the public, like, this is so important. Yes, we've been doing it for a long time, but a lot of this is new, right? Really, just in the last year. We're still having a hard time understanding it, the public is too. So taking our time, updating the science, really thinking about whether the SRAs buy us anything, because they're gonna cost us a lot too, in mitigations and potentially, you know, extra money that homeowners have to pay to be able to evaluate their properties on the SRAs. I'm, I'm not convinced it's helpful. And, and I appreciate, you know, all the people actually in Fairway Park and Sharp Park, you know, commenting about equity. And, and that's really why I brought up the protection of private property, because I am seeing firsthand that the city is not doing anything to protect private property where private property does not have a road between it. You know? Talk about Shoreview, all the way up Manor, Palmetto, Esplanade, all these properties are on their own. I mean, we're not even helping them evaluate the infrastructure and the streets right now, you know, so that they can fill out their application. So let's talk about equity and how, and how we really are helping all of our residents move forward. And, and also how we're protecting our population from climate change that is coming and that is already here. I mean, just look at the last two winters and the amount of flooding in this area, the new bluff erosion that's been happening that, that is threatening properties. The Coastal Act in 1977 also did not consider climate change, right? So that's a new mandate that they have brought forth, and that the state government is supporting their work in managing cities, updating their local coastal plans to plan for what's ahead. Because what's ahead is not, is not great, you know? Sea level rise might be a ways off, and, you know, the new science delays some of that. And, and yeah, maybe some of the homes in Fairway Park are, are no longer vulnerable right now. I think those vulnerability maps are so important, right? So that we know what projects we need to do, how we can improve the flooding in the golf course and on Clarinden, because those risks are rising and increasing, and, and our residents are at risk. And it's not easy work, but it's the work of elected officials to do this hard work, to plan, to have a vision for the future, to make sure that we're doing right for what's coming. It's hard work, and it takes a lot of time. And I don't think we should rush it.
And look at all the work that staff has done over and over and over in all of these years and all of this time, trying to make something that everybody would agree on and that it would go forward. The people, the, the SRAs were to try to help, not to try to hurt. The people in Fairway want the SRAs. The people who are living by the beach don't want them. I mean, it's like something that is beyond me. When I got the first description of the SRAs, I thought it was the greatest thing. And then you listen to people, and you hear this opposite story. And it, it's just, I know I keep just saying the same thing, it's so difficult. And, and I totally respect our staff and everything that they've done. And I came here grappling with the fact that, "Oh, my God, what if I vote no? How hard is that gonna be?" I keep saying the same words, but it's because it's difficult.
Well, and staff worked on the SRAs because they thought that the Coastal Commission's modifications weren't gonna be approved by council.
Right.
I mean, we never actually talked about that, but that's, that's the work that they've been putting in. So, and I don't think, I mean, I don't think we all understand them yet, even ourselves. So, I mean, I'm okay going through the policies and, and trying to understand tonight. I don't, I don't know what our next steps are and what our path is forward, but...
Can we let everyone?
Bathroom? Oh, we probably all need a bathroom break.
Can we take, can we take a 10-minute break? I know we're in the middle of conversation, but we've been here since six.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's go nine minutes, because we never come back on time anyway, and go to 8:30. And I bring this meeting back to council.
If I may, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Because I wasn't quite ready to give up the conversation in lieu of the...
Correct.
And I think it was Councilmember Bowles who made an assertion that we haven't had the conversation around the 2020 draft. And I'd like to lead into that, leading into that conversation.
Shh, please. Please, we're having a meeting. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I can hear my voice just fine. Leading into that conversation, I would like to assert that it, it strikes me that, at least for as long as I've been paying attention to this process, which has been since 2018, and, you know, that's out of all 15 years, I'm sure. It seems like, it seems like I have a sense that our staff has worked more collaboratively with Coastal Commission staff over the course of the last several months than any of the impressions I have had as far as I've been paying attention. And so that's not lost on me, is that if our staffs are actually collaborating in a way that perhaps they haven't been, that's something I'm not comfortable easily disregarding. By which, you know, just in case anyone thinks I'm backtracking on anything, if my entire community is screaming at me that this is not the way to go, I'm not easily disregarding it if that should happen to be the outcome, one way or the other. But I do want to raise that point. And then coming back to Councilmember Bowles' point, that we have not yet discussed the 2020. I feel like that's one of, you know, as Councilmember Beckmeyer said, "Let's flesh out all the elephants," that, that's one of them. So let's, let's have that discussion, because I, I think my premise is, do any of us believe that if we were to go with the recommendations of coastal, no, let me rephrase that. Given the recommendations of coastal staff based on our 2020, if we were to go forward with the draft as written anyway, I guess, with accepting the recommendations, without accepting the recommendations? I think what's being proposed is, don't accept the recommendations, get it from the horse's mouth, the horse being the Coastal Commission. This is starting to become a menagerie at this point between elephants and horses. And if I make an occasional attempt at humor, it's only because the friction is tense and you'd be cut with a knife. So my question is, do we actually think, one way or the other, if we were to present the 2020 as is today, that would get us closer to having an updated anything? Or do we think that at the end of that process, it would be abandoned?
But we did submit the 2020 version, and it came back with all of these suggested modifications, right? And so when I hear people say, "Well, we just go back to the 2020 version." Well, the 2020 version obviously is not what the Coastal Commission is going to accept. So then, it's like, well, do we, do we even, yeah, go ahead.
According to staff, means that's, their staff's interpretation, you know, they know their commission, they know what decisions have been made, what agreements have been made on other things. So based on that informed staff relationship, if you will, and knowledge of the process that happens at the Coastal Commission, they said, "No, no, 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 no" to lots of things, and made modified, you know, suggestions. And that's what we've been working off of. That's what you've been working off of. And so I've heard from community members, "Yeah, but the commissioners never even, that, that never had a hearing, that never had an airing, that was never discussed publicly." And it should be. So I guess, to your, whoever's question, what does staff think about that? I'd like to hear. What is your opinion of what would happen if we just said, "You know what? We're done. Here it is, 2020. We're resubmitting our homework." What happens?
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers, Kevin Woodhouse, City Manager. I'm gonna try to get to, get to that question and also try to frame a couple points. If the council thinks it would be helpful, one thing that we can do is just reiterate some of the main points about the legal and regulatory framework that we're in. And, and remind everybody about what is a local coastal land use plan? What is the purpose of that? And what are the pros and cons of a 45-year-old one versus a modern one? So we can talk a little bit about that to refresh why we're actually doing this. Why has this been a major strategic priority for city councils of Pacifica for so long? And we've been working on it. So, and it remains a major strategy of the city council, and that's where the direction from the council to staff to work on this comes. So the challenge, and, and when we summarize sort of the regulatory and legal framework, the, the challenge is the authority that the Coastal Commission actually has in practice and in law about what cities on the coast do. And we went through a process, began before I even was here, and got to that point of the 2020 submittal. And Coastal Commission staff's recommendation to the commission was very dramatic and resounding suggested modifications to the document. And then in the process, and Director Murdock can articulate this better than me, but when that happened, as you recall, they published their suggested modifications, and the Coastal Commission was set for the hearing two weeks later, I think it was, very, very sudden. And the way the process plays out is Coastal Commission would hear it, they would, you know, accept staff's suggested modifications, or maybe tweak them a little bit, and send that document back to the Pacifica City Council and say, "Accept it as edited or start the process over again." And so it was the judgment that we want some more time to work with, collaboratively with coastal staff, which we've been, as staff, told for years that we need to focus on. It's actually a major council strategic planning priority, is to work closely with coastal staff, to try to hash through some of these very difficult policy issues. And necessarily, because the chasm was so large between the 2020 submittal and the coastal staff modifications, there's gonna need to be compromise in order to, in any possibility, get a certified LCLUP, which gets back to the point about why and what is the benefit of having a modernized and certified LCLUP versus relying on a 45-year-old one. of having a modernized and certified LCLUP versus relying on a 45-year-old one. So, I think Councilmember Beckmeyer, it was a long, uh, you know, response or framing to, to your question. But I would say that the, the 2020 modifications that were suggested to coastal was a non-starter. And it would have had, and it would have come back to the city council, and then we would have started the LCLUP process all over again, because city council wouldn't have accepted what the Coastal Commission's suggested modifications were throughout the document. We heard that, that loud and clear from the council and the community at that time. So I think, you know, that's, that's my take on the answer. I'll turn to Director Murdock and, and then let, let the council take the lead on letting us know what contextual information would be helpful at this point in time. I mean, do you want to review, what is the role of an LCLUP in a city? And why is it important to a community? What is the, what are the benefits in these alternate modifications compared to a 45-year-old LCLUP? Because we've summarized a lot of those in the case studies that we prepared for, for the last, the previous, the third meeting, I think it was, or second meeting. And, and this is a very difficult process, and it's not a one-size-fits-all for any community. And this is new to coastal commissions, and it's new to, to us. And we've really worked hard as staff to try to come at it in creative ways, such as creating all of those case studies to show, what does this really mean in practice for folks, for property owners? And, and, you know, hopefully that information is sort of adding and helping as we work through this. But I'll stop there and, and, you know, take, take direction from, from council. See if Director Murdock wants to add anything to that. But, you know, before we dive deep on role of LCLUP, how's it important in how local government works versus state government regulatory agency Coastal Commission? You know, there's a whole framework there that is, that is hard to, hard to grasp. But there are some very black and white legal aspects to working in that system.
Thank you, City Manager. Thank you, Council. Everything the City Manager said about the process and the mechanics of the LCLUP certification is correct. Should the city had proceeded, uh, in March of 2023, or chooses to proceed at some point with a plan comparable to the February 2020 plan adopted by city council, that plan will be modified by the Coastal Commission. It's almost certainty. Perhaps in, in ways even more far-reaching than the staff recommendations from the Coastal Commission staff. And then the city council would have 180 days to accept those modifications or start over, as the City Manager said. I think it's important to recognize that a choice not to proceed with this update has various consequences. There are consequences of continuing on indefinitely, or at least for some prolonged period, with the 1980 local coastal land use plan. It is not structured and does not identify the needs of the community in the same way that they exist today in 2024. That is a plan reflecting the needs of the community in 1980, or perhaps earlier than that, during the time it took to prepare the plan. The needs have changed very much in 40-plus years. Environmental needs have changed. Certain successes have been achieved in terms of open space protections. Shoreline protection exists where it didn't before. Housing needs are as acute as they've ever been in our community. And so there are a variety of challenges that the 1980 LCLUP, I think, will prevent the city council from addressing for the community. And it's important to recognize that if a choice is made to continue with the 1980 LCLUP more directly or perhaps more technically, there will be practical challenges with administering this city with a 1980 LCP or LCLUP and a 2040 general plan. There are many inconsistencies between those documents, some of which that can, can be managed on a project review basis or on a city operational basis, some which will be difficult to manage. And thus, we will revert to the 1980 LCLUP and the limitations and perhaps outdatedness of some of those components. And so I think there are more examples, but just at a high level, there are consequences to a, a decision not to pursue an LCLUP sort of on a nearer-term timeline. And in terms of timeline, we are postured to achieve an LCLUP certification on the shortest possible timeline that I can imagine, as we sit here today. We have the attention, we have the willingness to think creatively and compromise with the Coastal Commission staff in a way that I have not seen it in my time, approaching 10 years with the city of Pacifica. We are not exchanging pointed comment letters back and forth between agencies. We are meeting face-to-face. We're going to their offices in San Francisco. They're coming here regularly in the spirit of compromise and effectuating an outcome that both agencies can live with, recognizing neither agency is going to love everything about it. But that's the staff-to-staff judgment, and ultimately what matters is the city council's judgment and the Coastal Commission's. Choosing to do a, a more robust start-over or expanding new, you know, areas of analysis, realistically, in terms of timeline, puts us probably a year to two years out from having any other culminating event with a certification hearing. That's just the reality of the process that we would be starting, rather than the process we would be concluding with this plan here. And so again, trade-offs and compromises, um, as well as consequences for the city council to consider.
Director Murdock. Given that right now, we seem to actually have a working relationship with their staff, I think whenever I evoke someone's name, it, um, I try to be very sensitive about it and hope that I'm doing it in a very, very, very respectful fashion, especially when I haven't spoken to that person well in advance, to ask if I have permission to, um, give my recollection of their comment. But we had, um, some tours for our higher electeds not too long ago. And in point of fact, did she not make the comment to you? So, may I have your permission to ask your recollection of the comment that Congresswoman Eschew made to you?
We were standing on the pier, and, um, we were showing her all the damage and all, you know, talking about our plans for Beach Boulevard, the infrastructure resiliency project, working with Army Corps, asking for her assistance in continuing with that work. And she had, she had concern about our relationship with the Coastal Commission. She said, you need to work with the Coastal Commission. As I, is, is that the comment you're referring to? Yeah. And I was like, well, yeah, because we have to. I mean, we knew that. But the implication, my takeaway, was her read on how well we were working with them, was that was gonna factor into how likely we were gonna receive support. And I thought about it, and I realized, well, that makes sense, because why would you want to put a lot of effort into something that's gonna fail? I mean, to cut to the chase, right? And so then, because it was after that, timing-wise, that we got the LCLUP back, I think. I think. Because it was right after she was, pretty soon after she was in office.
I think it was.
Because remember, we had the Jackie Spear tour, and it was some months later after, and I was, yeah, you can, you know, it's knowable. Gee, there's a calendar. We'll look it up. But in any case, the point being, we had to get closer. I think that's really what I'm talking about. We were out here, and we had to work to get closer to agreement. And that, I feel we've done, we're doing, and it's continuing. One of the things that I thought about in regard to all this, I mean, I was being pretty flippant before, like, hey, yeah, let's take back the message. Ain't working so well, the SRA thing. But we have made progress, and there is learning in this process. Because I'm here to tell you, any community that tries this is gonna experience the same things we're experiencing. We're not that unique. There are private property owners in every community. There are reasons that communities have pulled back at the last, you know, 11th hour and decided to hold with what they have. Because this perception of overreach, the perception of taking control from a state regulatory agency, things that are properly in the control of the local jurisdiction. And so we have to live within this environment where we have, I mean, we have the EPA. We have, you know, all level, we have Fish and Wildlife. We have every kind of agency. We have ESHA. We have so many things that we've got to balance and figure out in running our city and moving our city forward. And private property owners who happen to own in the coastal zone are in a position where those things affect them perhaps more than other property owners in Pacifica. Unless, of course, your property backs up onto San Pedro Creek, for example. Fish and Wildlife are your, you know, part of your, your nexus, your calculus of what can you do with your property, and who do you have to have permission from? And what might be yes, what might be no in terms of permitting? And so what I think, you know, I'm only beginning to fully grasp the interplay between all those other agencies and other regulatory and our city and our permitting. And how do we, our city, when someone comes to us with a project, take all that and factor it into approvals for permits? And feedback to projects that are proposed? What part do we permit? What part do you say, well, we can do this up to here, but you're gonna have to go here, here, and here to get other approvals? I know that often when I, we ask those kinds of really broad questions, it's like, well, it kind of depends on each specific project. So, I don't know what I'm saying.
So the reason I brought that question up, and we did have those tours after the Coastal Commission meeting. Yeah. Um, it was, it might have even been a couple of weeks within the meeting. But the reason I brought that up specifically, that the Congresswoman specifically, um, gave us the helpful advice that, uh, we need to have strong collaboration with this agency that quite often we have to interact with, is to get back to the question of, given the relationship our staffs currently have, which in your tenure recollection, we haven't had before, in my six, seven-year recollection, first time I see a glimmer of hope on that front, we have other things we need to bring before Coastal Commission. Like the Beach Boulevard Resiliency Infrastructure Project is one example. As we're trying to figure out our other neighborhoods, you know, at some point, even though apparently it's not in our direct purview to, um, figure out the Birm situation, maybe they'll be more favorable to our voice strongly advocating for, uh, San Francisco if we maintain a strong working relationship. And I feel like that's a legitimate concern as we try and figure this out. So it was supposed to be in the form of a question to staff, whether or not that. Feel free to take it as a question.
I think I've been hopeful in the course of discussions with the Coastal Commission staff over the better part of the last year, working towards some greater understanding of our respective interests and ways that we could align them in the LCLUP, rather than, you know, speak, you know, past one another in relation to the policies, that we would be able to use this as a, a launchpad to even better relationships over the years for other very important activities for our community, like the Beach Boulevard Infrastructure Resiliency Project, the Bieber, like, you know, addressing the needs of other parts of our town that are succumbing to coastal erosion, and other needs that maybe we haven't identified yet, that we need to think creatively, move quickly, and understand each other more effectively. I'm not sure that whatever the outcome of this process is will necessarily adversely impact that bigger-picture relationship. What I am more concerned about is the ability, the ability to get the same time and attention for another go at this beyond the one that we've spent so much time undertaking on the city side and that they've taken so much time undertaking on the Coastal Commission side. They are putting a lot of chips onto the table from their staff's side to try to line up the support internally and with the Coastal Commission for a compromise approach that there are few, if any, examples of, uh, on a statewide basis. And we've tried to, I think, be an equal partner in that, in trying to get the council to think more broadly about compromise approaches and, and the policies as well. Maybe we missed the mark. That's really for you to say. But, um, you know, people on the city staff's side and the Coastal Commission staff's side have not thought of some other master compromise yet that might, might be acceptable to both agencies.
May I continue? Um, I think what I've heard clearly is that, um, in staff's opinion, if we were to maintain the 2020, I think no-go was the term used, or something thereabouts.
Well, I don't think that, in my professional assessment, that there's any viable path to that February 2020 LCLUP being certified. We have significant evidence to suggest that is the case with 125-plus suggested modifications.
And did you say that if we were to start the process over, we'd probably be starting it over in about two years?
What I meant by that statement is, if you take for granted that the February 2020 plan, which is essentially the bones of this LCLUP, if that's not adequate, I think there's a need to start essentially a fresh planning process to figure out what other way to write this LCLUP with community input, analyzing the, the needs of the various parts of our community, and doing that sort of from the ground up. Because this plan and its various iterations has not been acceptable to the Coastal Commission, to the community, to the city council. And so why continue to tinker if we need to just start over? That's what I was reflecting, and recognizing that that's a, you know, one-to-two or longer year process.
So now we have this SB 272, Senator Laird, who passed this, uh, who had it passed through the legislature and last year, that says, your sea level rise adaptation needs to be updated by 2034, to which at a glance, oh, it's 10 years from now. That's a long time. As I'm fully aware that right now, we're 15 years into our current process. We'd be two years until apparently we'd be beginning a new process, which cuts it down to eight, which is half the time we've already spent, assuming it's a, a much smoother process than the last decade and a half has been. So that's the start-over answer, I think. And then after that, you already answered this once, but forgive me. My brain works in images, and you are a brilliant technician. Can you help me understand, in a more metaphorical sense, with more of a picture, what it looks like if the only thing we're working on going forward is the 1980? And that, by the way, is independent of Senate Bill 272, where we don't have funding for X, Y, and Z if we realistically aren't updated. Maybe I'm making a huge assumption there, but go with me for the sake of conversation for two seconds with the SOR. What does that really mean if we're working off the 1980? Help, help me understand that as a non-technician.
Trying to think of a visual is challenging. I, I'll just have to admit, the first thing that came to mind for me was like a Rube Goldberg contraption, where we've got this sort of magnificent challenge of different things moving and trying to work together that really aren't designed for that purpose. And so trying to synchronize, um, you know, a general plan that's the guiding document for our city with something that's 40-plus years old and not at all intended or drafted to be aligned with it, I think there will be some inventive approaches needed to manage that. And there will be instances where we cannot manage that, because the, the differences between the two are so significant, or one document is silent on a key issue in a way that both documents need to cohesively address. And we will be scratching our heads, saying, well, what do we do? Will we get the right outcomes? I don't know. Will we be triggering, you know, many project-level local coastal program amendments? Probably. And that is, uh, an inefficient way for the staff and for applicants to need to undertake our development process, as one example.
And if I can just add to Tiger's question, and what does it mean for the Sharp Park specific plan that we've invested a lot of time and money, and also if we're stuck with the 1980?
I think it probably leads to a much longer timeframe before that document is likely to be certified. We had conceptualized integrating that into the baseline of a new LCLUP, rather than taking essentially a new plan in the Sharp Park specific plan and trying to plug it into the 1980 LCLUP. They need to be consistent with one another, and I think it's hard for me to imagine how that would occur. And so more than likely, the Sharp Park specific plan would be on ice for some extended period of time. So if we were to talk about another one to two years to start over some sort of LCLUP process, you're probably thinking about two to four years before the Sharp Park specific plan might be certified in a best-case scenario.
Christian, is it possible to address the inconsistencies in the general plan without the SRAs?
If I understand the question, I think the answer is yes. The SRAs are not a required policy. Indeed, you know, the Coastal Commission proposed modifications that would have had a Coastal Act compliant LCLUP without the SRAs. The SRAs were and are an attempt to try to use unique circumstances in West Sharp Park and Rockaway Beach that are justifiable of Coastal Act, let me rephrase, to try to use unique characteristics of Coastal Act-supported development, coastal access, et cetera, to justify an alternative approach that would be, incidentally, more protective of private property and would allow greater development potential of those private properties as a consequence of all of the public benefits that are closest to the shoreline. That is not a required approach, but the alternative is that everyone gets the most restrictive treatment in the LCLUP, which is most closely aligned to the traditional Coastal Act approach. The Coastal Commission was willing to think of this alternative conflict resolution process, which we've talked a little bit about previously, where they would, they would undertake a departure from their traditional most restrictive regulations to allow protection for these Coastal Act-consistent uses: trails, public streets, public parking, public infrastructure, et cetera. It's a lot to get them to contemplate and to consider that, and that's, that's been the product of significant effort between staffs to, to show them the need to do that if, if we were to think of a new way to compromise and try to advance the LCLUP. As we can see, you know, there are complexities with that approach as well.
I want to go back to something you just said about the most restrictive policies, because what I'm hearing from the community is, it's, there's not equity in this proposed draft, because properties that are behind the SRA lines are not subject to the most restrictive policy. And everyone else, not only is, they're, in their view, compared to what we submitted in 2020, it's way worse for them. There are much more restrictive policies being applied. So logically, and it's understandable, the takeaway from that is, you traded me for that. That's not equitable. Why do I have to do more, more expense, more studies, more everything than these folks over here? I've, we've heard it many times, I read it in many, 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 many emails, treat everyone the same, everyone should be treated the same. What I'm hearing you say, it'd be, yeah, the most restrictive way possible.
That's my assessment of the situation, yes. And I think that's reflected in the suggested modifications from the Coastal Commission that would have set the most restrictive baseline across the city. That is a plan that clearly had a good chance of getting certified by the Coastal Commission. The February 2020 plan approved by this city council was a very pro-protection, pro-development plan that the Coastal Commission staff has concluded was inconsistent with the Coastal Act. And so I think it's a false promise to the community, from my professional assessment, that there's any chance that a February 2020-like plan can get certified by the Coastal Commission. So to suggest, to go back to that, I think is a suggestion to stick for an indefinite period with the 1980 LCLUP, because that will be the consequence of pursuing the February 2020 LCLUP with the Coastal Commission, in my professional judgment. So the alternative is, is there another way where some of the community can result with more protection as a compromise and facilitate ongoing protection of very important coastal-dependent and coastal act-supported uses, like public streets, public infrastructure, trails, public parking, you know, visitor accommodations that provide key sources of tax revenue for our community? That's an approach that the SRAs facilitate. It is not at the expense of other communities, it's to the benefit of the SRA areas, that is true, but it is not more restrictive for the areas outside of the SRA in order for the SRA to be enabled. Everyone would have the non-SRA approach without the SRAs. I don't know that there's a lot of incremental benefit to be gained for those areas in a baseline, sort of treat everyone the same. Treating everyone the same and equity in this context means everyone gets the most restrictive policies.
After 100 times, can you just give us the overview of SRAs again?
The, the key function of the SRAs is that where they exist, properties behind that line can factor in the protection provided by the existing shoreline protection structures. Without the SRAs, the standard Coastal Act approach that's endorsed by the Coastal Commission is to act as though there is no shoreline protection in place. That means for areas subject to coastal erosion, for instance, which much of our coastline is subject to significant coastal erosion hazard, those sites would need to analyze their developments as though there was no protection, and they would be subject to the maximum shoreline or coastline erosion hazard. That will significantly impact the development potential of those properties. We will strive to avoid takings, which many people have been concerned about, but that's going to mean allowing the minimum amount of development that's necessary to avoid the takings. Maybe that means putting a modular home or something that can be easily relocated in 15 or 20 years when the coastal erosion advances. Perhaps that passes the takings test, but that's probably not what we want for our community for the long term if there's an alternative. That's the key functional piece. You can treat the shoreline protection as, as being there because it is there. There are other trade-offs, like having to put together a shoreline management plan and making some public investments in improving the shoreline, evaluating opportunities to remove shoreline protection, to Councilmember Bowles's point, some of those activities could have important financial impacts, and that needs to be thoroughly thought through when preparing the shoreline management plan. And if the, the choice is made not to pursue that, so be it, the, the SRA policies would be suspended because the city didn't commit to that offset. But the key question is, does the city council want areas where we can get it to have more development potential and rely on the protection of the existing shoreline protection? It's, that's it, that's the essence of it. If you want everyone to be required not to get protection and account for the protection, then that's the baseline most restrictive approach. That's certainly Coastal Act compliant. We've been working hard to find an alternative approach where we can justify it that would also be consistent with the Coastal Act.
And was the West Fairway neighborhood considered at one point in the SRA?
Yes. We had several specific conversations with the Coastal Commission staff about that neighborhood, and the Coastal Commission staff's contention was that the same sort of concentration and significance of factors, it was not present along that stretch of the shoreline. Given the unique distance from the shoreline, the applicability of the hazards there, it's primarily a flooding hazard, not a coastal erosion hazard, there's plenty of, there's room to consider alternative approaches, whereas a Long Beach Boulevard, for example, there's essentially no, no or very little space to adapt. So it's really the, the sort of compound effect of circumstances in West Sharp Park and in Rockaway Beach that make those strong candidates for this creative approach with the Coastal Commission that are not present in the Coastal Commission staff's assessment of West Fairway Park. And if, as difficult as it is to say it, if I step back and look objectively, you know, I think they have a reasonable argument, and if that's going to be the argument that they pursue at the Coastal Commission, I have no doubt that the Coastal Commission will not allow an SRA in West Fairway Park. And so I think we're expending a lot of energy and not acting in good faith, from my assessment, if I were to come to you and recommend extension to include West Fairway Park. Moreover, even if the SRA was applicable there, it wouldn't really make any difference because the SRA, the key function that I explained, is that you can rely on the protection of the existing shoreline protection, and that is not protecting them from flooding, and coastal erosion is not the applicable hazard through year 2100, at the very least. And so you don't get there to protect the West Fairway Park neighborhood through the SRA policies, in my humble assessment.
Thank you.
And so, can you just explain to me what the negative effects will be for the West Fairway Park neighborhood to not be in an SRA? What, what are, yeah, what does that look like for them?
Well, I think the immediate answer is that there's no benefit to them being in the SRA, given the function of what the SRA does. So I don't think they're any better or worse off with or without the SRA. It's really a good-faith sort of relationship component with the Coastal Commission to come back to them with something that's really just making the exception the rule by drawing the line farther than it needs to be to have a narrowly tailored alternative approach, which is the, the SRA compromise that the staffs have discussed.
Why is there no benefit to the West Fairway Park community to be in an SRA?
I would say there is not one now, based on my understanding of the applicable hazards and the relationship of those hazards to the shoreline protection. So you don't just get to do more development in the SRA, you get to consider the protection provided by the shoreline protection structure. And so for the modeled coastal erosion hazard, for example, that the, the Birm might be providing, right, attenuating that erosion, that doesn't get anywhere near the neighborhood through the projections through year 2100. And so the small part of the West Fairway Park neighborhood that's in a coastal vulnerability zone is, is subject to flooding, not coastal erosion. And so the existing shoreline protection is not providing that protection from the model flooding hazard currently.
If I may add to that, Director Murdock, please, please chime in to articulate it better, but in fact, that if the city is able to successfully close the Clarendon Gap flood point for Clarendon area, then the, the golf course and fairway west benefit from that, and approval of the SRAs for West Sharp Park, not directly but indirectly as a policy matter, benefits the, the coast, the permitting with the Coastal Commission of the B-BUR project.
Say that again? Can you say that one more time?
So, the city manager's explaining that really the protection that the West Fairway Park neighborhood needs would come from the B-BUR project and closing the Clarendon Gap. If you look at the hazard modeling with the current projection of 5.7 feet of sea level rise, the significant proportion of that appears to be modeled coming through the Clarendon Gap and then filling in Laguna Salada and presenting the flooding hazard to that very small portion of the West Fairway Park neighborhood. With B-BUR, presuming that it's approved and constructed and designed in this manner, it could mitigate that flood hazard, which would potentially eliminate those portions of the neighborhood from the coastal vulnerability zone and relieve them from the most restrictive components in this LCLUP that's recommended. That with or without potentially a reduced sea level rise projection as well with the new Ocean Protection Council data. We have not run those, those models, we've not had the opportunity to do that with a technical consultant, but conceivably, lower sea level rise would result in less areas subject to a flooding hazard, and so that's another way potentially that the West Fairway Park neighborhood would benefit, and that would have much more impact than an SRA would in this, this context.
Christine?
Yeah, I'm, I'm still not clear, clear that the B-BUR, even closing the gap, is really going to eliminate the flooding, as we saw this year, you know, the overtopping and, and knowing that GHD is not designing the new seawall to stop all of our overtopping. So I think there will still be some flooding there, maybe a little bit less. There were other policies about, you know, adding pump stations, you know, both in Sharp Park, and, and as we go through these policies, there's talk about interior levees in, in the golf course area, and some of those are actually to keep the flooding from the streets, from going into the golf course and vice versa. So there are other ways that we can work to reduce the flooding in those areas, even, even though they're, they're not being helped, you know, fully by, by the armoring, that's my understanding.
I would agree, that, that's right. And as we've said in prior LCLUP meetings, there's significant support in this LCLUP as the staffs recommended it to you for flood mitigation in various ways, floodproofing infrastructure, adapting development out of flood-prone areas, and undertaking other types of engineering interventions like pumps or levees or what have you that would mitigate flood hazards. Indeed, there's, there's multiple policies that support that, and that's really the key issue for that neighborhood. It's not related to SRAs, which is primarily related to a coastal erosion hazard.
And then my other question, I, I think there's still a lot of confusion about substantial structural modifications.
That's what I was just going to say.
All right. So I, I know we were going over the definitions first, but I'm not sure we really went over that one. So that might be a good place to, to go next, but...
City clerk.
What, one of the basic question, well, one of the questions, I, I have two questions. Are the substantial structural modifications any different in the SRAs than in the rest of town? I know they were for a little while, but I think that got deleted.
So the, the definition is not different, the consequence of exceeding the threshold of an SSM is somewhat different in and out of the SRA, whereas outside of the SRA, you need to remove all of the existing non-conformities on the property with city regulations, whereas in the SRA, it's limited to those applicable to the relevant coastal hazard only.
I thought in the staff report, it said that that was something we were going to consider later. So that's part of my confusion.
You may be recalling the discussion of waivers from standards, but that's, that's not the same thing.
Okay, so I, I definitely need some more clarification on that. And then just a basic, a second question, say someone's doing a substantial structural modification, okay, they have to record their deed restriction, they can't rely on armoring in the future, but does that prevent them from doing another remodel or addition in the future? No.
So the, the SSM definition does not directly prevent someone from doing anything at all. What it does require is a fresh assessment of that proposed development to bring it as closely in line with standards for what would be new development today. And the idea is, if you're making significant investments in your property, you should bring it closer in line to the current regulations of today. It's, it's a pretty conventional theory of non-conformity, right? You are allowed and entitled to keep your development the way it was permitted, right? You have a vested right unless and until you redevelop that, or in this case, exceed a substantial threshold of additional improvements, you know, 50% structural change, for example. And so indeed, over time, properties might need to alter the way that the... And so indeed, over time, properties might need to alter the way that the development is situated. Elevating a structure out of flood hazard, for example, pushing it farther away from a coastal erosion hazard is sort of two simple examples. And, you know, then perhaps the development would be able to be permitted. It's not preventing or prohibiting development simply because you trigger an SSM.
Okay. Thank you.
I think what makes it prohibitive is the increased costs. So in effect, it is prohibitive. And I think that's where we're getting the pushback and the concern legitimately. I think also, to your earlier point about ESHA and how an updated LCLUP reflects the environmental concerns of today that are, let's face it, 1980, is pretty silent on, or they're much less restrictive, let's say it that way. So when we have, you know, wetlands that are produced by drainage ditches, but it's a wetland, then all the ESHA requirements pertain. So when you're talking about the vested rights, as you were saying before, to the existing building, the way it was when it was first built, now that doesn't count anymore. All the new ESHA requirements, all the new current view is what has to pertain to that property. Am I right?
I think that's generally right, but I think where many folks jump to the conclusion is, then I will not be allowed to do anything with my property. And I think that's a false conclusion. What this is requiring be done is to confront the reality of today, that there are sensitive environmental resources and that steps should be taken to avoid losing those resources, right? And thoughtful project design should try to avoid impacting those resources. I think so much of what's in this LCLUP could be summarized by the word disclosure, where the 1980 LCLUP is silent on so many of these issues. The law is still there, looming somewhere outside of the 1980 LCLUP, but you don't find out about it until it's too late, either in the city's review process or in an appeal to the Coastal Commission. And you had no idea at the outset with your project that you needed to consider these factors, like hazard mitigation, you know, analyzing where erosion will be, considering where the wetlands might be proximate to your property. This document takes a great leap forward in disclosure of what all of the applicable laws and requirements to develop will be. Ignoring them does not make them go away. I think it makes it more difficult to confront them successfully, in my opinion, by identifying these requirements early on and then figuring out what's the best way to work with or around those particular issues.
Okay. I want to talk about deed restrictions. I want to talk about the impacts on valuation that those policies would have. That's different than what we currently have. That's a marked difference from, you know, defaulting. I mean, I think I personally am pretty attached to the 2020 because it was hard-won and a better deal, a more reflective of reality, of today's reality, than 1980. And yet, it's not good enough, it's not enough for the Coastal Commission, so then we can only fall back to 1980. One thing about 1980 is there weren't deed restrictions. That's very terrifying. That's something that's a big problem for people in our community, in any community. We're just happen to be the test case. And so what about that? What about deed restrictions? What about indemnifying the city? And the larger issue is what about the city, through purposes or through the process of these LCLUP policies, taking on a legal risk of lawsuits from property owners because we're imposing deed restrictions? Do they exist now in today's world? Yes. And you know that. You provided the data of analyzing the appeals. And it wasn't a huge, you know, dataset. But the ones you analyzed said, yep, deed restrictions are a thing. That are imposed by the Coastal Commission when appeals happen. What I am understanding is we're going to cut all that out and go ahead and put it right in our LCP because that's acceptable to coastal staff. But what are the downside implications of that? Who pays, as so many of the emails and letters that we received say? Who pays? City of Pacifica or Coastal Commission?
Well, there's indeed a lot to unpack there. I'll try my best to address the various issues. I think keeping focused on this theme of disclosure is important. Ignoring deed restrictions in our LCLUP doesn't make them go away. And we've shown that for projects that end up before the Coastal Commission, those will be requirements. So I think what we're trying to do in this LCLUP is disclose that reality. I think there's an interesting tension where some are asking for equal treatment of properties, but were the city council to take out mention of deed restrictions, assuming that it made it through the Coastal Commission process, that's going to result in an unequal outcome as well for the community, where some properties that are in the appeals jurisdiction have a high probability of ending up with those deed restrictions and properties that are outside of the appeals jurisdiction perhaps won't. But I think the potential exists that more development will get appealed and be changed in some way by the Coastal Commission. The more that our LCLUP is out of step with what we expect is the reality of the Coastal Commission acting on those projects. We've seen it, I don't want to say the addresses, but we've seen several projects where the city council took a very aggressive pro-development approach, intentionally or unintentionally, but based on the 1980 LCLUP, only to see a very different outcome at the Coastal Commission. And so I don't know that that's doing anybody a good service. Regarding payments, that's a difficult question. I think it's important to recognize the city council routinely takes actions, whether through the general plan or zoning or various ordinances, that affect different properties in different ways and affect property values, you know, to the benefit of some and the detriment of others. Those in and of themselves are not takings. They do have real-world impacts on property value, and those are tough policy trade-offs. You know, to maximize property value, you know, the city council might want to allow, you know, 50 units per acre on every property in the city, but there are reasons not to do that. And there are some properties that get to do that. And there are some properties that maybe get to build one house on their property. So the city council, in legislating in general, requires making those trade-offs and those balancing decisions. And so in recognition of the Coastal Act and what the law says about new development not relying on shoreline protection, this is effectuating and disclosing that reality that the law will not allow them to have shoreline protection for their new development in the future. Is it better or worse to tell them now or later, when they seek the shoreline protection and are told, well, your development's not eligible? It gets back to disclosure.
I feel like with the Sheet's decision, there's this heightened awareness and sensitivity to the notion of takings. And the question that I'll ask more specifically, because I don't think I heard an answer to it, is okay. We're talking about a policy that's in alignment with coastal policy. Fine, if we are advocate, no, if we put in the deed restriction on our end versus them putting in the deed restriction on appeal, and maybe I need some legal advice around takings and how they work. It seems like in one version, it's our document, therefore, we're going to get sued over the question of takings. Whereas if it ain't in our document and it doesn't get brought up until it's on appeal at Coastal, Coastal will get sued over the question of takings.
That may be correct. Councilmember Big Stick, Denise Bazano, Assistant City Attorney. But there are a number of areas of the city where the appeal jurisdiction is not the Coastal Commission. Is that correct, Director Murdock? So in other words, the city makes the determination in the first instance. And so we would be applying our policies, our regulations.
Right. We're not currently requiring deed restrictions the way Coastal Commission would have us, vis a vis our current LCP, correct?
Correct. Correct. But we do use deed restrictions for other types of land use decisions. So it's not something completely foreign to land use determinations or reviews. Deed restrictions are used in different areas. And I would say that there is at least one appellate case that's held up the deed restrictions for Coastal Commission deed restrictions. So as part of a regulatory scheme. So in this case, we would be using the deed restrictions as part of our regulatory documents in the manner that Director Murdock mentioned, which is in order to essentially disclose restrictions on the property that run with the land.
Okay, I think I followed that.
I'll just maybe offer one other observation. I've heard it various times from some on this council that it would have been great if somebody knew before they purchased that home on such and such a street, which I won't say, that there were significant restrictions or hazards applicable to the property. And if only they, you know, looked at the LCLUP or gone into the planning department before putting in that offer. The deed restriction, for better or for worse, is one tool to provide that disclosure so that property owners are making informed decisions, you know, prior to purchasing property. Again, there will be a trade-off potentially for the current property owners in relation to that transaction. But again, the council's being asked to balance the impact on those current residents and those future residents of our community. And this deed restriction, I think that's one of the important dimensions there. It's also important, from my perspective, to consider whether the LCLUP would be certified by the Coastal Commission without these provisions. The council could make the choice to remove it and see if it gets added back, but you'll more than likely be right back in the same position, you know, six or 12 months from now after that process concludes and being forced to make that tough decision.
In absence of anyone jumping up to a microphone, I mean, I feel like we've all asked the questions around the pertinent point at this point. And the last question remaining is to analyze Chapter 6 or not to analyze Chapter 6.
So I'm not going to answer that question yet because I think it would be good for me to clearly understand what the ramifications will be for each section of our coast side, our coastline, if we don't have the SRAs. And then, so say we accept the suggested modifications here, but we don't have the SRAs. What does that look like for each part of our coastline? Like, I'm not getting that picture in the wording of all of the policies, right? I would need a visual of that. Like, what does that mean?
So I'll do my best to try to summarize it in terms that are understandable. So much of Pacifica's coastline has no existing shoreline protection or has some sort of hodgepodge, you know, rocks dumped on the shoreline, but it's not permitted. And so effectively, from a legal standpoint, is not there. With or without SRAs, and arguably, they wouldn't be eligible because there's no shoreline protection. But in any case, what happens to those areas? They have sort of standard Coastal Act approach, where development is proposed and they need to analyze that proposed development as though no shoreline protection is there and take full account of the applicable coastal hazards, whatever those may be. Typically, most impactfully, coastal erosion. So setting property or development back significantly from the shoreline, for example. Properties that are threatened by coastal erosion, their ability to obtain shoreline protection through a Coastal Commission permit hinges on whether they're considered what's known as existing development or not. And that's the whole set of complicated issues about 1977 and later, or 1976 and earlier, which we are not going to effectively address in this LCLUP. And that's why the staff's recommendation is to just be silent on it and let the law go where the law will go, through the courts or through the legislature. But recognizing what that means today is 1977 and later is new development, and 1976 and earlier is existing development. That is the case for every place outside of the SRAs, up and down the coastline. So hopefully, we can sort of address all of them in one fell swoop. What's different for the SRAs, where those policies to be enacted, is that they can consider the protection provided by the existing shoreline protection structures. And the simple assumption is that in almost every case, that will create significantly more development potential for those properties, giving them greater property values. I do not think it's realistic to get that same policy approach for the entirety of the coastline. A, because shoreline protection's not there. And B, because then it's no longer the exception, it's the rule. And the rule is that the Coastal Act doesn't allow that. The Coastal Act discourages armoring and only allows it to protect existing development. So the SRAs would allow new and existing development to rely on the benefits of the shoreline protection.
Thank you. I have another question, too. The City of Pacifica, well, I'll say it in a statement, did not make the coastal vulnerability zones or the tsunami inundation zones. Is that correct? And we cannot change those zones, correct?
I think it's hard to answer that. The City of Pacifica did have a consultant prepare those zones and use them, the coastal vulnerability zones, but based on publicly available or third-party data. We did not prepare our own technical hazards analysis, to my knowledge, to inform those maps. Perhaps they would have ended up differently, perhaps they would not have. The City of Pacifica did not prepare tsunami evacuation zone maps. Those are prepared by the state of California. They are one of the inputs into the coastal vulnerability zone mapping. And so it's a type of coastal hazard that I think people like to downplay because they're infrequent, the probability of occurrence is very low. But when they do occur, they can be very devastating and deadly. And so it's one of those sort of low probability but high severity scenarios, and it's difficult to figure out exactly what to do. Probably something other than ignore it is the right approach. But beyond that, I think there are different ways to think about managing the probability versus the costs of addressing it in one way or another.
And what is the change between what we submitted in 2020 and what we have before us now with specific regard to those zones?
Those zones being the coastal vulnerability zones or the tsunami evacuation zones?
All of them.
All of them?
What happened in this draft versus the way they were treated, or whatever we called them, whatever we used in 2020? Because the reason I ask the question is I am continually reminded by folks that see a more restrictive approach to the way those zones are implemented or the way those zones are applied in terms of what they can do or not do with their property.
Yeah, I think I would characterize it as the reliance on the coastal vulnerability zones in the document today is based on the scientific understanding of those hazards at a citywide scale and using those as a tool to say, okay, these are areas with likely important coastal hazard exposure that need to be further studied. And more than likely, we'll need some sort of design consideration for the development to mitigate the applicability and impact of those hazards. The 2020 LCLUP took an arbitrary position that those most restrictive policies about development would only apply to the shoreline, which is properties having a frontage on the water. That is not... That is not the reality of where coastal hazards apply in Pacifica. That is a very narrow subset of areas subject to coastal hazards. And ignoring all of the other areas that coastal hazards would apply, I believe is likely inconsistent with the coastal act and is not adequately addressing hazards and citing to avoid the need for shoreline protection, for example, in new development.
Were the tsunami restrictions in the 2020, or was that something new?
We'd have to check. I believe the Coastal Commission's suggested modifications expanded the relevance of the tsunami evacuation zones relative to some policies.
I believe so, too. I think so, too. And the question is, I hear what you're saying about the, you know, very small likelihood of possibility, but when it's in there, it's 100% likelihood of it being applied to a property, right?
That's right.
Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, it's Policy CRI 45. And that's exactly right, recognizing that what this relates to is a deed, a deed restriction with the waiver of rights and indemnification. Because if a serious tsunami were to occur, it can be quite devastating and dangerous and affect property or result in costly cleanup or removal of development being required. And that tsunami could occur tomorrow. And, or it could occur in a thousand years, nobody knows. But when it occurs, it will be very significant and impactful. And I think what the Coastal Commission's modification does is recognize disclosure is important so that people don't inadvertently purchase property in a tsunami hazard zone and then be surprised if and when they're impacted by a tsunami hazard, which they, they could be.
What other ways could that occur besides being in our LCLUP? Is there anything, you know, with the purchase of the property? Anything about the private transaction? I mean, I feel like the city's getting in the middle of that. And it's to the detriment of our citizens for something that's pretty damned unlikely to happen. But like I said, it's 100% likely to affect our people. Planning for it, insurance implications, finance implications, property value implications. I want, I really want to probe this. I don't feel like that's fair. I think it's too much. I think it's, for me, this is what I would call a give back. This is like, oh, you want the SRAs and you want to be able to use your, your armoring? Okay, but here's what you're gonna do over here. And I may be misreading that, but that's what it feels like to me, because it didn't exist in the previous iteration.
Sure, I can understand that perspective. We will try to confirm, but I'm highly confident that it's easy to, I think, conflate these issues, but it's important to understand the chronology. February 2020 had March 2023 suggested modifications. We believe that that modification related to the deed restriction and the tsunami came out of that set of comments. The SRA concept evolved months after that in staff-to-staff discussions. And so it's easy to see it as a quid pro quo for the SRAs, but it's not. It's a general concern and approach that the Coastal Commission expressed in their comments about the importance of tsunami hazards and to acknowledge them and to recognize that, you know, shoreline protection and waiver of rights and all of that is important for that hazard among coastal erosion and flooding and other potential coastal hazards as well. As far as other approaches, perhaps there are. Perhaps there's some sort of ordinance about broader property disclosures that, that could be required. I'm not sure. I don't know that we've done that legal research, but maybe it's possible. So I don't think I have all of the options, but perhaps, yes. But I think the disclosure is an important part, but not the only part of that policy. It's indemnification, it's waiver of rights, et cetera, that all sort of come with that package of hazard-related conditions.
Yes. And it's problematic. And that's what I'm trying to get to, is what else can be done? Are you saying we didn't do the mapping of those hazards? Perhaps with the new OPC data, with some other data, with more current science? I don't know. That, that analysis would look different than it currently looks based on what was done before? I don't know, because I'm not sure where it comes from. And the different ones of those different hazards that you're talking about? Like, oh, no, that one comes from NOAA, and we have to stick with that. This one, we can get our own analysis, and it might look different than what it looked like in the 2017 version. It's not clear to me which are which. I don't know that it's clear to the public which are which. But all of it feels overly restrictive and burdensome. And that's a problem. That's kind of a nonstarter. And how do we get around that? You know, in any negotiation, we're like, yeah, I can live with that. Yeah, no, I don't like that. That I don't like. So how do we deal with that? Because right now, what I'm being told is, we don't. Coastal Commission wants it. That's the way it feels. And it doesn't feel like there's any, we have no control then. We're like, okay, well.
But, well, but staff is proposing alternative modifications to what the Coastal Commission is asking for tsunamis in particular, right? That would reduce the amount of properties affected. And I don't, I sent you and Kevin an email this afternoon. I was looking online for, to try to answer Frank Fella's question, and I actually found county maps that had tsunami inundation maps. Because we were told that those didn't exist and that property owners would have to do that analysis all on their own. Like, how would you even start that? I don't know. But, so, so the county has inundation maps, and they are much smaller areas than what is in the tsunami hazard maps.
Right, I'm aware of these maps. I don't know enough about them to suggest that they're an appropriate tool to address this recommendation from staff. They indeed call them the tsunami inundation zone or area, but I don't know substantively what those maps are based off of. There was this change as well from 2009 to around 2021, I think, where the state adopted a new methodology, which in many cases expanded the area of tsunami evacuation zones under the high-intensity hazard scenarios that are used for the tsunami evacuation planning. So I don't know what's going on with those county maps, other than they indicate perhaps some, some promise, but I don't, I don't know. I don't think that we can rely on them for the discussion tonight.
Yeah, and, and a lot of them overlapped with flooding, which is already, you know, in FEMA maps and other maps that we have documented, too. So, so the extra areas weren't that much. But, yeah, to Sue's point, I mean, I think, I think these are questions we'd really like you to take back to Coastal Commission staff and ask, you know, like, yeah, what, what data do we have some flexibility on? Where do these maps come from? Are there other alternatives that might not be as restrictive?
Well, I think we largely know the answer to the question of where do these maps come from. The tsunami evacuation zones that the policy is recommended by the Coastal Commission come from the state based on their set of parameters relative to a, an ocean earthquake scenario that triggers a tsunami. We, we know that. We know where the various other coastal vulnerability zone inputs came from. They used FEMA flooding data plus sea level rise projections to estimate, based on topography and whatnot, where those flood areas would be. We understand sort of the modeling system used for a lot of the coastal erosion mapping, so I think we have a good handle on it. The question is, could we come up with a different map if time and money were not a concern? And I think the answer is probably yes, but time and money are always a concern. And coming up with new citywide hazard maps is likely to be a very costly process and a very time-consuming process for the city to contemplate. And it's not clear, you know, how significantly they would differ from some of these more readily available models.
If I could add into this conversation about maps and, and science as, as just a reminder, is that these policies, let's not forget, apply when a property owner comes in for redevelopment, when they're undertaking something. So in terms of best science or updated maps, it could be the case that, you know, five years from now, someone's going to redevelop, and the maps and the science are going to be different at that time. So remember that this is in, you know, the best practice is that you're updating all of that over time for these documents as the data becomes available. And we talked about the OPC maps last week and, and how that would be one of the priority updates immediately after certification. So just that, that trigger is not that LCP's adopted and everybody has to comply with that. It's that LCP's adopted and that in the future, if you're gonna redevelop and, or apply and do something with your property, then it applies at that time.
But in this particular case for the tsunami hazard versus inundation, I mean, I'm assuming that you've gone over these proposed alternative modifications with staff. And so the Coastal Commission was, staff, not commissioners, was potentially open to a less restrictive tsunami mapping. Is, is that a fair statement?
That's right. I think everything that you've seen the staff propose here, we've discussed and we believe that the Coastal Commission staff will ultimately support in their recommendation or come back with something to further refine it, right? At some point, maybe in their suggested modifications. We're not putting forth anything that we think is far afield of where we can end up in a compromised solution. So we introduced this concern. We said, hey, evacuation zones for tsunamis overly broad. It's a worst-case scenario, not a probable scenario. And we think something more calibrated that would affect fewer properties is appropriate. And I think we got the requisite head nods, and we moved on to other, other issues in this discussion, of which there are many to cover with them. And so could it be something else? Maybe. I think what I'm envisioning is that we, we formulate what that more probable tsunami event would be in the implementation plan, in the zoning. We currently in our implementation plan have a variety of different sort of specialized area of analysis related to geotechnical hazards and other issues that are fleshed out in more detail. And this is, I think, a prime candidate to indicate what that, you know, tsunami event assumption should be for that site-specific analysis, for, for instance.
But I think, what, what I'm hearing, the concern in the community is that we're redlining particular properties that we might not need to right now, right? So if there's some way that we can now figure out what we can use as the maps and actually define it and not have to make every property owner figure out what they have to do, I think that would be helpful to the community. So I mean, even just asking the question, you know, where do these county maps come from? Is this acceptable? You know, could be helpful to move us along.
I mean, we can, we can do more work to try to check with the county as to how they develop those maps, you know? It will be insightful, or it won't. You know, it will be some revelation, or it'll be, no, it's the old maps or the new maps from the state. We, we just don't know. I just, general concept, I think there's, there's maybe an inclination from the community to not want to confront the hazards that are applicable in the coastal zone, and it's a highly hazardous area. And this LCLUP does a lot to reflect what we know as a local jurisdiction and as scientists have advised us about the applicability of hazards in the coastal zone. And there are different ways to go about it, but sort of writ large, this document is advancing 40 years in the understanding of hazards so that we can make better decisions about development today. And that's uncomfortable, and it will be impactful for some people, but ignoring that doesn't make the hazards go away. It just, they surface at less convenient junctures, I'll put it that way, whether it's your property's affected by the hazard and you're displaced. Or you come in for a project and already spent $20,000 on plans, only to find out, hey, you need to go model these hazards and change your project. So there are winners and losers at different points in time in this process, but the hazards are there. You know, how do we confront and, and work with them most effectively, I think, is the question.
Well, and, I'll put "and" in there. By asking the questions and bringing up the redlining of certain properties and maps, we are showing that we care about the community that has legitimate fears right now. And so that's very important to me. So if we're able to even ask questions that can bring some clarity to our community, I think we need to do that. And so thank you for that, because it all, and then it all goes back to the substantial structural modifications. And all the questions that go along with that, I think you, I think you sent in a bunch of questions, Sue, with very specific questions, like, you know, what if I add solar, et cetera? Like, very specific questions need to be answered, too. I just know that there's a whole, a whole community that, that has a lot of fear. And so let's ask the questions. Let's look at the new maps. Let's, let's get the answers. Let's, yeah.
Mayor.
Sorry.
Go ahead. Sorry.
No, I was looking at, to see what, we, there are natural hazard reports that when you buy a property, it's a mandatory document. And I was, I, because I couldn't remember if tsunami's in there. And so far, I have not seen tsunami zones, fire hazard zone, high-fire hazard zones, flood seismic zones, but I did not see tsunami zones on the first page of the reports. So that, that was, sorry, where I was off in another section trying to figure that out. Because that's only on purchases, though. But it wouldn't happen when people remodeled, because they wouldn't have to get these reports. But just, I was thinking about disclosure and, and when you first purchase a property. So, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, at, at that, that moment of silence, I was just gonna jump into, to say, you know, we're, we're at 10 o'clock and we, you know, this process was, and what we had sort of started with was go through and discuss the specific policies and the alternate modifications and get input, recommendations that were directed to take back to Coastal Commission. But I, I just wanted to throw out there, well, you know, the question for the council to start thinking about is, what is the next step? There's a, a, you know, a very large work plan of, you know, high council priorities that, that we have lined up, and this is one of them. And where, where are we in the process? What's the next step? Not necessarily to answer now, but before we end the meeting tonight, where, where are we going? What do we want to do?
I, I mean, I think it's kind of clear just by our silence that we weren't ready to do that. We're not ready to look at this yet. That's just my opinion, or else we would be digging in. And none of us are, well, Tiger asked.
Tiger's digging.
Well, I'm, I'm asking, in an effort to move it along, I, you know, what questions do you want staff to have answers for the next time we reconvene? Well, you know, are we going to reconvene, A, because there's this lingering question of, are we doing the thing? The way I'm hearing y'all, it sounds like we are still, but I don't know if I have clarity around that point. After that, it sounds like, especially from Mary's last statement, you'd like some specifics to be brought back. We should ask for those to be brought back then and spend a moment doing that. And then at that point, if we have given out direction, please come back with these specifics. That would imply we're continuing down this path. And so perhaps we should continue down the path of the matrix so that we're getting some of that work done while we're waiting for those specifics to come back. So question number one, are we still doing the thing?
I'm not feeling confident about it. Personally, I'm feeling like we need to let it sit for a minute. The community's telling us it's flawed, there's problems, we don't understand things, we have questions. Some public comment that we received, I think today, or maybe yesterday, speaks to the fact, and I think it's, tonight it was also stated, that while we have been at this process for 13 years, or nine years, or whatever amount of years, the convention of SRA is not very old. It hasn't been around for 13 years. It's really unusual, it's different and problematic, and it's separating people, which is not my desire. I don't know what else could be done, I mean, other than the most restricted my desire. I don't know what else could be done, I mean, other than the most restrictive policy for everyone. That's fair. But doesn't sound great either. So, that, you know, and my worry is that kind of continuing to chew at this and chew at this and chew at this when we have some significant questions and problems with it doesn't feel like a good use of time. And so, you know, I, but I don't have a proposal. I'm just telling you how I feel. I'm not comfortable. I don't feel like it's, it's ready for primetime. I don't feel like I'm ready to move, you know, let's do the resolution at the next meeting, which is what is in our staff report for tonight.
So I think that if we have substantial questions that we're asking to be brought back at the next meeting, then that may very well imply that we're not passing a resolution at the next meeting. But are you saying there should be a next meeting is kind of where I'm at? I mean, as I'm listening to it and, the metaphor I've come up with, it's a humdinger. We pass the Coastal Commission modifications, in which case it's like having all our limbs chopped off. We pass the SRA, it's like having two arms and a foot chopped off. Or we go back to 1980 and it's like being on bed support indefinitely. That's the way I'm looking at it right now. It's a very non-technical way of looking at it. That, that's as close to a metaphor as so far is occurring to me. And I meant what I said earlier in my initial statement, I don't think comfort's an option at any point in this, no matter what direction we turn. And the other part of that was happiness seems really improbable. It's somehow more likely than comfort, so go figure. So that's, that's the metaphor in my mind that I'm staring at. And because it, it all looks like not good going forward, no matter what we do, I'm not chomping at the bit to put forth a suggestion, except to say that, you know, if, if it's dead, kill it. If there's, if we want to keep working on it, then now is the time to figure out the process by which we work on it. If we have more questions to bring back, fine, we need to ask those questions so it can be brought back. And if there's wiggle room to chomp on these bits while we're waiting, comfort? I don't believe in comfort at this point. I wish I could.
I don't want to throw the whole thing away. I think there's so much that has gone into it. I don't know the answers at all. I don't have even suggestions. But I don't think we throw it all away. I think we have a lot of questions. And I know we asked a lot of questions, but I think we have more questions, in my opinion.
Yeah, and we'll have more as we, as we go through. I mean, I, I agree. I think we've spent so much time and money on this. We, we owe it to the community to value that effort and the effort of our planning staff, you know, the last year and a half to, to finish going through this and asking all of our questions. And we, and we don't know where it's going to go when we're done, but that's okay, right? It's, we're honoring the process and asking the questions and trying to get the community's questions answered. And, and there is a third path, or fourth, I'm trying to remember what all you said. I'm getting too tired. I don't think I can go over this tonight as it is. But, you know, maybe we can go through it all first without the SRAs and then, and then go back and reflect on how the SRAs help, or not, right? That, that is another option that we could, I mean, staff has put in a lot of other modifications to other policies that aren't just giving in to what the Coastal Commission has asked, right? A lot of those are better. So, so I think there's something of value here that, that we owe it to, to, to keep going through.
I can agree with that. Yeah, I agree with that.
As do I. I count for so far.
What do you imagine what is a timeline or a process? Because what I'm worried about is this causing other work to not get done. And that it's just kind of this inevitable, like, inevitable, you know, drag on energy, staff, confidence of the community. I mean, these are all negative things. I know, comfort isn't an option here. But is there, is there a benefit to pausing? Is there, you know, an opportunity for more information, better maps, some, you know, something? Can we, you know, one of the questions I had initially this evening that I didn't really ask is where, you know, I know what our goal was with this. We were looking for this to be like a summer, you know, in it. But what is the real deadline? Like, what is the real timeline? And what choice do we want to make about the priority?
Yeah.
So what is it? What is the deadline? Is there a deadline right now? Are we on a clock?
So I think there are at least a few relevant considerations. One is that, from one perspective, we're years overdue to complete the process in terms of a timeline. There is no current deadline or timeline with the Coastal Commission in relation to this application. The general plan amendment version of the edits to the LCLUP, or general plan consistency, I think is a better way to put it, that has not been accepted for filing yet by the Coastal Commission. And so that clock for 90 days and potential 12-month extension has not started. I think the anticipation was we would get some feedback on those changes and then merge them with this bigger policy question here, and then really the clock would start for us. So there is flexibility and time in that sense. But longer term, just sort of looking through the end of this year and into next, you know, we often get the criticism of doing important work, you know, entering the holiday season, and so that could take months off of the end of this year and beginning part of next year. As the city manager mentioned, we have a robust work plan of other city council priorities that I think have the potential to be affected by making this process play out. You know, this was supposed to be a three-meeting process, became a four, now this is four and a half, and we're on track for five or six at, at best. And so it's taking up a lot more space, sort of in time and resources. And then there's also the question of knowing we'll have at least one new city council member at the end of this year. And will that person, you know, want time? Or will you want to give that person time to get up to speed and to learn? Will that person bring a very different policy perspective and want something extraordinarily different that will delay the process? I mean, the city council is as primed in terms of its preparation and experience with this process as it will be for years to come. And so hopefully those are some relevant factors to consider about the timeline. And then there's also the prospect about whenever this gets to the Coastal Commission, will, will there be further changes required by the Coastal Commission that then yet have to come back through the local process again? And so how that affects the timeline. So there's a best case, end of this year, this is in place, if we're able to get it done. Or there's a worst case where it's years from now before this gets done if, if action isn't taken. I'm not able to give you a more precise timeline than that, but there are various, I think, important considerations.
And I'd add to that, but we don't know the specifics on, but it just relates to the Coastal Commission staff's workload and their willingness and attention right now that they're focusing very much on, on this document. And in the meeting that I had with Executive Director Kate Hucklebridge, her, her, you know, commitment to working on this now and into the summer. But we don't know what other priorities they have on their work plan, if this is waylaid or stretches out. Maybe it becomes less important to them. So, but we can't speak to those specifics. It's just a factor that's out there now that we know that we have their attention and momentum.
I just want to add that right now, it has our attention and momentum, too. Like, if I took a break for two months, oh my God, I'd have to start back over and look through everything again. And I'm sure for our community, too. I, I would prefer that we finish going through the modif, the most, you know, suggested modifications and asking our questions and knowing, and, and then, you know, then we can decide if, if, if this is something that we want to push forward or not. But I don't, I don't think we have enough to, to decide that right now. And, and I do think it's important work that we, that we do need to do to be able to get grant funding, you know, to Anna Esche's point about, you know, our seawall and, and the pier and, and the state is also kind of starting to tell us that, too, with SB 272 and SB 1 and, you know, giving the Coastal Commission that, that authority. So I'm game to keep going and, and then, and then we'll see. And my big concern in terms of staffing is the housing element, because we are so behind on that. So can you maybe give us a little bit of idea of where we stand on that and, and what upcoming meetings the next few months that's going to entail and staff work to prepare for that?
Sure. We met last week with our reviewer from the Department of Housing and Community Development to go over the comments that were in comment letter number two. We are encouraged by the conversation and I think, for the most part, understand the steps that will be needed to address those comments and, and get much closer, if not all the way, to certification or ability to be certified. Looming out there is the completion of the Phase One rezoning requirement for the sites to implement the RENA and the associated, you know, core objective development standards. Based on the confirmation from that meeting, where we think the sites list is unlikely to change, we will be proceeding in the very near future, within the next week or so, with releasing the notice of preparation for the environmental impact report. And so there's an immense amount of work just included in the rezoning program and working towards certification with further edits, not to mention all of the other required implementation activities. It's a massive work program just associated with the housing element. That's not including other notable development projects that are currently making their way through our process and many other key city council priorities, like short-term rental ordinance updates and others.
Okay, yeah. So, I don't know. To me, I think the housing element actually probably trumps this in terms of timing, you know, if we, if we can't work on things in parallel. You know, I don't know what you all think, but yeah, the, the longer we wait, the more builder's remedy projects we're going to get. We already have six. And that, you know, are not consistent with our general plan and, and the community's goals. And we need to be able to stop that as soon as we can. And given what Christian just said, that there's, there's another year, perhaps because we haven't set the clock yet with the Coastal Commission, there's a little bit more flexibility with that.
Well, I think the law provides that the Coastal Commission, upon acceptance for filing, has to take action within 90 days, or for good cause, can grant themselves a year extension. We've had very focused conversations with the Coastal Commission staff on that point and said, we do not want to end up in a situation where this gets a 12-month extension. And they've, I think, given the assurances that they can, they will not do that. This is not a standard run-of-the-mill LCLUP amendment. This has their focus and attention as, from their perspective, hopefully a successful outcome of some balanced approach that implements this sort of neighborhood carve-out concept that's been taking shape in some form over the last couple of years. And so they, I think, are unlikely, barring some unforeseen circumstance, to, to trigger that 12-month extension. So I think we are on a short time horizon. If we get something that's reasonably close to what we've been negotiating for the better part of the last year, something that deviates significantly, I don't know if the Coastal Commission could uphold their commitment on the timeline. So it's hard to predict.
Newton's first law of motion is occurring to me. Objects in motion tend to stay in motion, and likewise, objects at rest tend to stay at rest. And getting an object at rest to get back into motion takes extra added energy. I propose asking the questions now if we have them. I guess one of my questions is, when would we be coming back for our next round of this?
So it sounds like Councilmember Big Stick, I was just going to say, by the way, lose momentum. That's what I was exactly thinking. But, so it sounds like Councilmember Big Stick, you're talking about a continuance of some sort to answer the questions, to come back and discuss this again? Is that correct?
Yes. I think part of the answer to that depends on the questions that are asked and the amount of time it may take to research and formulate the answers. So it's, I think, hard to provide a, a date estimate at this, at this time.
And, and one thing that I would say is that it, it's clear that this discussion will be yet another special council meeting, not on a regular council meeting day, because we have some substantial budget work to do at the next regular council meeting. And then that sort of triggers follow-up budget, and there's, there's other items as well on regular meeting timelines. So we'll be looking for extra special meeting dates when the, depending on what the questions are, when we feel like we can come back prepared.
I mean, I think it was really important what we did here, because we were able to express how we were feeling, uncomfortable, you know, what we can look for. And I, I don't want to just throw this out either, but I also know that we can't just go back to the 2020 version. And I, and I think that's a hard thing for our community to hear. But it's already been, like, they've already given all these comments on it. So I, I would appreciate the opportunity to go through the document with the SRAs kind of over here. Like, let's, I would like to look at the, the modifications and then talk about the SRAs, like, can, is it an, can it be an either/or? Does it have to be both, you know? So I, I think we should, yeah, keep looking at it, but I, I think there might be a way to do it.
If I, if I may on that point, a question for Director Murdoch is, is, the SRAs in this later, latest iteration is sort of built in throughout the policies, right? So that question about separating out them, how would that technically work?
So the SRA exceptions, if you will, that, that alter the baseline policies are in a small number of policies in the document. I think it's conceivable that we would be able to pull the SRA text out and create sort of a version A and a version B for the council to see what that would look like. Just sort of programmatically and fundamentally, just to be clear, you know, we can do the work, but that means the more restrictive version of policies citywide, rather than a subset that has less restrictive policies under certain circumstances. So we can, we can do it, but I mean, the effect is, is, I think, pretty straightforward in, in some respects.
Yeah, I don't, I don't feel like you needed to create two separate documents. I mean, there's, there's the basic SRA new policies, and then there's a few places where you say, you know, accept in SRAs that we can pull out ourselves, right? And then, and then go back to. Yeah, like you said, I don't think that's very many policies.
I have to go over it more deeply, but I have had a lot of communication. We all received the same communication with significant questions about the way that we have our environmental justice policies in here. I'm still upset about not addressing the golf course. I think this little change that we talked about earlier tonight doesn't really do it for me. I think that there are some questions about cheats that I haven't fully understood. There's legal implications. There are legal threats and implications in a lot of the communication that we received from the community, that I want to understand how realistic those are. Because everyone can say, there's going to be all these lawsuits. There's always going to be all these lawsuits. In fact, there already are all these lawsuits all the time. I don't know how to evaluate that. But I fear that if the product that we put forward isn't fully vetted and thought through, the likelihood of those lawsuits is greater. And so that's kind of when my... And so that's kind of where my worry, I don't know what to say to your, there's no comfort statement, but that's where my uncomfortableness comes from, is it doesn't feel like a fully baked document.
Right. So form that into a question and give it to our city attorney is my suggestion from there. Your worry is warranted. It is a legitimate concern. And so now that you have that worry, what's the question that comes from it? Give it to our city attorney and then they can bring it back to us. That's, that I think is what...
And there's still...
To the question of a pause, I think it's either we're doing it or we're not doing it. And that's why I keep coming back to it. Heaven knows, there's been enough comment that has come through over the last, at least, week if not longer. Be done with it already. Go back to 1980. We feel like we're better protected under that. I feel like the idea of, let's stop for a while, is part and parcel to that notion of, let's just not do it. So I believe your worry is very legitimate. All I'm saying is, in lieu of not pausing, which means, as near as I can tell, death to this as we are currently looking at it, take that worry, formulate a question, and let's have that data when next we're here. Maybe we need a full new data set from these questions generated to come to the conclusion, okay, we actually need to kill it. Maybe that is the answer. But I, I want whatever should be in front of us that we can come to a consensus one way or the other. I don't have a sense right now on my own of anything except for that. It seems like there's more will on this council to continue forward at any pace than to not continue at all. So take that worry, form a question, and let's review the answer when next we meet.
And I think there'll be some questions that no one can answer, like questions of, if you have the SRAs, what will happen to the insurance? What will happen to the mortgages? What will happen to the values of those properties? Seems to me the value could go up. But who knows? We don't know. We're not insurance companies. We're not lenders. We won't know the answer to that. And those are hard decisions to make for somebody when we don't know But I...
I don't have a question formulated to ask the city attorney tonight.
No.
If that's what you're asking me to do.
No.
I'm not doing that.
No.
Not just you. If anyone has questions, you know.
No, not tonight.
Okay.
Nope. So where are we? Where does that leave us?
A special meeting?
When?
Yeah. I, I mean, unless, so, so again, as of now, there were a number of questions that were asked and, you know, answered by staff. But as of now, there's not, it seems to me that if, if this is going to continue, we have to find a special meeting date to start going through the Chapter 6 policies specifically. More questions may come out of that and, you know, take it, take it from there. But, but that would be the next step. And this, this process is, we're at meeting number four. That would be meeting number five. Adoption of a resolution would be six or later, depending. And, you know, there'll be a, a process of recalibrating the workload and work plan that staff is working on and the, and the timing for the council. And it all depends on availability of meetings and when we're going to do them, which is a challenge to schedule, as the council knows, but we can do it and figure it out.
I also want to make sure that we're not delaying our short-term rental discussion.
I, I can't, I can't commit to that not being delayed. I mean, this, this process is intensive and, and it, it takes significant planning resources and, and my resources. So at this point in time, if this is turning into a six or seven meeting process, we, we have to evaluate that. And, and if, if a study session for short-term rentals is not going to be delayed, then we have to look at other impacts, whether it's housing element related or other, other priorities that aren't going to get done. I mean, we, we, you know, it's just a, a matter of that calculus and staff resources working on this.
Time period?
Nope.
What time period?
What do you mean?
When, when do we have another meeting on this, a special study session, separate? In two weeks?
Are you, are you asking me to take out my calendar right now?
Yeah.
No, I'm not.
Counsel, I, I, I don't, I don't recommend trying to determine a date from the dais because there's a lot of variables.
I didn't mean the date, the time period.
Okay.
Like three weeks?
But in, in terms of an actual action for tonight, I think the Assistant City Attorney was suggesting this would be to continue this item to a date to be determined.
Okay.
And we can look in whatever timeframe the council's feeling comfortable about.
Okay. Mayor Vadoos, as part of your question, you know, like, no sooner than
Right.
Two weeks. Like, if we could turn it around in a week, like, that's probably not enough time, is my sense.
No.
The council needs to digest, work through this. There was a lot of emotion tonight. And so, you know, a two to three week minimum, I think, is, is what you're trying to confirm. And then, as City Manager said, there's a lot of scheduling variables that need to also be determined.
Right. I, I wanted to see whether people were talking two, three weeks or two months.
Right, right.
So just a general time period.
And if we're not asking you all the questions tonight that we might need you to come back with, when would you need to have us ask those questions?
Sooner the better, because some of them could trigger a lot of work to research and prepare answers. So as soon as you can formulate them would be helpful. That might drive some of the decision-making about when we can come back.
In preparation for the March 2 meeting, I know that there was kind of this period open to the public to ask whatever questions they'd like about, I think specifically SRAs, but in general, the document. And that was very helpful, I thought. And I think that a part of my thought process as I was reading these many, many emails that contained many, many questions was, you know, I'd love to be able to turn them all around to staff to get answers for these. They're all legitimate. They're all concerns. I didn't get the feeling that anyone was asking them for any reason except for, this is how my property is going to be affected. And I feel like I either at least need an answer, if not a reassurance. But perhaps if we open it up for a week for the commu, I mean, if we're not coming back for three weeks, why don't we broadcast like we did last time, ask your questions of staff? Is that too much to ask of staff? Because I know that that was a very heavy lift, you know, leading up to the March 2 meeting. But it's hard for me to fathom another way to do it because as I look at a list that's, you know, three pages long, and I'm thinking to myself, God, I do want an answer to all of these.
Yeah.
That strikes me as a way to do it. And by giving the community that week-long period or two-week-long period or whatever, to send in the questions, that also would give us a period that's very reasonable to see what we can concoct between now and then to add to that pile. So that, again, it's hopefully manageable. And this is all under the heading of, is this reasonable?
Well, I think we are here to carry out the process that you think you need to get this to conclusion. Opening this up to the community adds a significant new level of effort to be perfectly forthright. Then you will hear criticisms that a week wasn't long enough, or I didn't hear about it. You know, how do we publicize this opportunity? So it sounds good in concept, but I think there are some implications of opening this up more broadly beyond...
Look at what we get most of our questions. We get most of our questions on the day of the meeting. It's not always feasible to answer all those questions on the day of a meeting. Or at, I bet if I look now, there's questions that happened at 6:30 tonight or 7 o'clock, you know, when we're already here. So I don't know how you determine your time period because the questions aren't going to get answered on the day of the meeting.
Shall we self-limit ourselves to a time period?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to ask right now, I think that the questions that have been asked from the community have come in in such a fashion that they're accessible to our staff. That's my set of questions going into the next meeting. I'm done.
Well, I already put forward a whole bunch of those questions to the staff, so...
Yeah.
Haven't really synthesized the answers.
And that's, that's where the time, that's where I feel like I need the time too. Because there are some answers. We did get some answers. But, you know, have we had an opportunity to really look through the answers and digest them?
And how do they get communicated back to the community if not through staff?
So also in some of these answers we got back today, the phrase, "The city council could consider including a clarification to the SSM definition to address this ambiguity" for at least a couple of points. It would be really helpful when the answer is something like that, if there's kind of this document over here with that list on it. Because if we have interest in addressing those ambiguities summarily, which often I do when I see there's a way to address an ambiguity, it would be nice to have that presented to us in such a way that we can just hand it right back to you and say, yes, please.
The, a couple of points if I'm hearing correctly. Number one, the, the questions in advance to the agenda that council members ask is made public. So that's available to the, to the public. When we are in the agenda questions, comments from the public that come in, that's for the council, council's information to inform your discussion and questions that you regurgitate to staff during deliberations, right? So that's how those topics and questions are handled. It's a, it's a, it's a, I think, part of what you're saying and, and the idea that we did in the earlier phase was opening up questions that staff is going to directly respond to, to the community is a, is a different and much larger work task.
I'm saying that the questions the community have already asked of us, I think if I'd had the mental wherewithal last night to write out the several pages worth and turn it back around to staff, I would have. I know that I flagged them specifically in my inbox so that as time or process allowed, I could just begin regurgitating them one by one. And given that it's been five, six hours of, five hours of, you know, processing, I haven't had time to ask any of them. I'm not sure which ones I would have preferred to have, except I got this sense as I was reading through them, thinking to myself how utterly overwhelming it was, that I'd kind of like answers to all of them.
Yeah.
And I'm not suggesting opening that time period up going forward from tonight, but I am suggesting those questions that came in even over the last 24, 48 hours, or the last week for that matter, that week-long worth of questions that were asked by our community, I'd like to see the analysis on that. I don't think I have any more questions personally. I have done everything I can to exhaust it. And frankly, asking for the 20th time, you know, what does it really look like if we revert back to the 1980 LCLUP? I have a clear enough sense at this point. Maybe I do have to ask it again, depending on, you know, how I'm feeling in three weeks' time when we come back. But these little specific questions that keep coming in, I think I want that clarity of, in which ways these will affect our community. And I keep hearing all the discomforts. Is it the discomfort that we don't have a document and we make life harder for ourselves as we try to work with Coastal Commission? Because once upon a time, they offered us anything that vaguely looked like a relationship and we said, no, thank you? Or is the discomfort I'm accepting, you know, these changes for each and every community member? Or are there, you know, some I'm willing to accept and some I'm not? And that's the point.
I can't, I can't formulate it. I am too tired to articulate a sensible question at this point. But I can tell you this. And for me, it all is in the arena of legality and legal risk. Because what has come across loud and clear to me is a fear and a concern from the community that we are taking on added risk. And I can't be more articulated, more articulate than that right now. I need to understand, I have to look at the sheets issue. It's very new itself. And what is the implication? How does that bear on all of this? So, you know, those are my biggest questions. Going back to the very salient questions that were asked about, you know, property-specific questions, I appreciated receiving those from the community. And maybe the, the, you know, I mean, I want to be honest, getting a 49 times repeated the same email, please acknowledge. After 40, the 48th time, you're pretty clear. And it's not generating a new question. It's the same question asked 49 times by 49 different people. So those 49 people are making it clear. I'm, I want to know too. I want to know too. I want to know too. But it's still the same question. I think that the vehicle, the vessel, if you will, for these questions really needs to be the council. And, you know, as the community has pointed out many times over the last week, they put us here. And we are beholden to them to answer those questions for them. I don't have the answers, but, you know, you know what I'm saying? As opposed to what we did before, which was a very general and useful process informing March 2, of having an open, you know, submit your questions process and in the moment of that day, ask your questions. It's definitely legal risk that I'm most focused on right now.
Mayor, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
A couple of things. One, it's 10:43. So I want to just bring that up. But also, Mayor Protem Beckmeyer, if, if you'd like, I could speak generally about the Sheets case and what it's about. But is that something you'd like me to do now or come back?
To me, generally is not what I need. I need, I need as much information as we can get. So generally is not going to help me tonight, that's for sure.
And if you're looking at the questions as Tiger requested, I mean, I think all those legal questions are there, right? Surf riders, the publics, the Pedro Point people. So I think, I think you could gather the questions from, from the public comments.
I, I do want to, I mean, the tsunami maps, I still want to know if we can use the county maps. I, I would like to know what's involved in incorporating the new data when it comes out. And, you know, what that process entails, how much it costs, how long it's going to take. Because maybe, maybe we could have that information and insert it as we're working through this.
Okay, I just thought of a question. Maybe it would be good to see all of the other strategies that we can look at to actually protect the Fairway Park neighborhood.
Like pump to get rid of the flood issue or?
Well, okay, so what, what are we deciding? Because, you know, I told you what I thought. I'm not really optimistic, but I'm willing to work hard. I committed to that when I ran. Doesn't seem like enough.
It'll never be enough.
I know that, that's what I'm saying. Okay. So...
So now, it's still 10:46. So do we have direction for a staff that we would like to come back with this, we will submit questions from council? Is that correct? Not, I mean, and, and items from the public should come to council and with enough time that we can actually ask the questions?
And understand, yeah. And get to go through the answers and not when, right when we sit down, like, here's the answers to the questions after I've been working all day and, you know.
Right. That, that's another point, that we all do have other jobs and people never take that into consideration here.
And, and are the answers that we get to our questions able to be shared with the public? So that we don't have to discuss all this again at the meeting?
So in terms of...
Maybe not the legal ones.
Non-legal ones. As, as City Manager Woodhouse mentioned, those questions and answers between, that council asked before the meeting and staff response do, those are already available to the public. So...
I didn't know that.
Yeah. So the public can look at those answers and see the responses from staff. Not the legal ones, but not the, not the responses from our office, the city attorney's office, but the, the answers provided by staff. So they would be available at any future meeting in the same manner.
Where are they usually posted?
Yeah, where would they find them?
I don't even know that.
Or would we share them?
They're, they're posted with the agenda documents, right, Sarah?
Right, the, the same...
Oh, no, she's saying no.
No, they're here at the meeting.
Yeah, they're made available.
They're here at the meeting, the, the responses to council questions on the day of, of the agenda, because we receive them that morning or, you know, over the weekend, are prepared and then provided for public information here. The other component that I, that I was hearing is the council, so there's questions from the community that are submitted as public comments to the council members. And any of those questions that are necessary to inform your deliberations, if you want to submit those to staff, then we can work on what the responses would be to those and that could probably be published as part of the agenda packet in advance of the next meeting, whenever we determine what the date of the next meeting will be. Because we'll have, the material's not changing at this point in time, we've already got those questions, reformulate them to staff. So, I mean, the importance of the council doing that is that it's, the intention is that it's helping to formulate the information you need to deliberate and make decisions about these policies. Because that's, that's the point where this process is at. Council is deliberating about these policies. And so reformulate those questions, get them to staff and we can work on responses. And, you know, once we determine the date, publish it with the agenda packet. And so the, so the, so the, did they take a motion to continue? So the, the action would be, you know, motion and action to, to continue to a date to be determined.
So who wants to make that motion?
I move that we continue this meeting to a date to be determined.
Second.
We know what the vote's going to be.
Whatever you wish.
Need one more, one more vote, like...
One more vote. It's okay.
And with the motion to continue this item to a date to be determined, made by Council Member Bowles and seconded by Council Member Big Stick, the vote passes four to one with Beckmeyer opposed.
That's, that's totally a good way to be.
And since it's not yet your birthday, when it does occur in about an hour's time, may it be significantly happier than the day before.
Okay.
Thank you.
It is 10:51 and I am going to adjourn this meeting.
Wait, 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 we didn't finish our council communications, I don't know.
Oh, yeah. Oh, God.
Okay, so let's propose how much longer we need to go.
I don't want to.
I don't want to.
I don't know if anybody else has any, I mean, I, I really just shared one thing and I, and there are some updates and some questions I have for you all that I'd like to ask, so, I mean, I can do it in less than 10 minutes.
Shall we?
Maybe even five.
I move to extend to 11:10.
Okay.
Second. Oh, there it is.
Passes unanimously to extend to 11:10.
Thank you, I guess I'm not adjourning the meeting.
Very soon, very soon.
I wanted to.
I'm not going to, I'm not going to list out everything I did, I just the things that I think are important, but the Emergency Preparedness and Safety Committee, Commission, I can't even talk. So we, we talked about the goals for the year and, and they're preparing a short presentation for you. Five slides or less. One of the things they brought up, actually was talking about the insurance market and fire insurance in particular and whether, and Kevin, if you're, if you're listening, whether the city has, has sent a letter in the past expressing our concerns to the insurance commissioner and our elected officials about what's going on with insurance being canceled. You know, most of that is, is in fire areas, but I've also learned recently that there's a few companies that are not insuring, you know, within 300 feet of the coast edge, too. So have we done anything about it? Is that something that we could consider doing, just expressing the concerns of the community that we're losing insurance, which, which then makes it difficult to get a mortgage, which then starts to lower property values?
I don't recall whether we've sent a specific letter, what we've done is, is maybe more, more specifically is, when this issue came up years ago, is that homeowners that were experiencing fire insurance questions, the North County Fire Authority would help in connections with the insurance commissioner and then at some of the, the fire preparedness days, we had representatives from the insurance commissioner there. So, you know, it, it was a, it was a process of, you know, city, that's not sort of a city core objective thing, we don't control how insurance companies work, but we can help facilitate them getting, and actually, North County Fire has information about where to send those questions with the state insurance commission, I believe.
Okay, well, I mean, I know some of our elected officials, like Josh Becker, are working on this, so it might be helpful to send letters in support of some of the work they're doing.
And, and so, so I guess on this issue, in, in terms of, in terms of weighing and sending a letter, we would, council member would have to request an agendized item, we'd have to put together, you know, a report about what the issue is and what we want to say in the letter and agendize that for a council discussion.
Okay, so, so we can, we can talk about that later. Commute.org, one of the regional committees I belong to is having their, they always do in April and May, trying to encourage people to use public transportation, ride their bikes, walk and so forth, and there's actually a prize, prizes now if you log in and register your walk, so they have multiple $250 gift cards. So I'm, I'm going to share this with the city manager so he can put it on Connect with Pacifica. But also, they've really been wanting to come do a presentation at a council meeting and I was talking to them and copied, I think you were copied on the email, if there's any way to get it on the agenda on May 13th. And again, they said it could just be a five-minute presentation, you know, about their programs, because they're really just trying to educate people and there's a lot of things they do, like Sue had mentioned before, you know, the, the free rides home and so forth if you belong to their programs. So if that's something that we could consider for the May 13th...
I know we have full agendas, but I really would support that. I remember Mike talking a lot about this when he was representing and how he was a little bit frustrated that we didn't, we weren't able to be bringing more to our community around that. Or benefiting more, let's say, from our participation with commute.org, so that might be a useful presentation to have.
And I would just want to add that our age-friendly work plan needs to be presented soon, so if, if we, if that could come first, that'd be great.
Uh huh. And that was a great event, by the way, that you and Roy put on. Really fun and really a lot of good ideas. And then just one more thing, so something that we were hearing about in one of the seminars at Progress, but then I also had a meeting with BKF engineers about infrastructure money. And so just wanting to share a little bit of, of what we learned, you know, we keep hearing there's a lot of money from the federal government coming down in the IRA money for infrastructure. We need a lot of infrastructure here and the key is to get in line as soon as possible. So what, what they were telling us at Progress is, the danger is when, in this next presidential election, they may end up, if it doesn't go, I don't want to say, if it goes a certain way...
A possible outcome could be...
A possible outcome would be that the, the money for the infrastructure plans would be cut. But any projects that are already in the pipeline and approved for funding would remain funded. So if there's any chance that we could look at that and see if there's projects we could apply for, now is really the time. Because there is a lot of money available. And then, so BKF is the engineering firm that Lauren Berman works for, so they provide civil engineering services. And if they're hired as the engineer, they also make sure to design their projects so that they're most likely to get certain grants. So they, so they have a grant writing and an engineering, both in the same firm, right? And so that's if we hire them to do the design, but also in terms of grant management, a lot of infrastructure-type grants need a lot of technical information in the application. And that is another area that they have strong expertise in that, you know, their engineers would be able to provide that information for us to be more likely to get the grant. So I'm just sharing that information. This was part of our discussion about how to maybe build staff capacity and, you know, grants that could, could help us build staff capacity. So something to consider. And that's all.
I can talk about, I mean, there were a lot, I talked to PG&E, I talked, we, we had segments on transportation, which they said, there'll be a surprise for Pacifica soon.
I heard that question.
Because of course I asked the question always, what about the coast? They, they know my question before I even ask it, whenever I raise my hand, they know the question. So we learned a lot there, I've been to a lot of things, I helped serve the seniors in Appreciation Day, that was fun. So always a good time. Anyway, and grand openings and all kinds of other stuff that I don't need to talk about. Okay?
Actually wrote in my Progress notes, Sue v Sam Tran.
Yeah. Okay. Is that it? No? You want to talk?
I don't want to talk.
I got appointed to the CCA Glitch Committee.
Very good.
At the City Leaders Summit in Sacramento, there was a big press conference around NO on the California Business Roundtable, as they put it, Voter Deception Act.
Is that the A.C.?
13?
13.
Yeah. I sat in on the A-Bag Executive Committee meeting because several board members happen to be in Sacramento, so they set up a separate room. The $20 billion bond measure around affordable housing will be on the ballot. It was actually rather moving hearing some elected's personal stories around their upbringing. And it's that kind of energy that might win our area some options for affordable housing that many in our community have advocated very strongly for over many, many years. And then we got a shout-out from Catherine Liu regarding the Measure Y. Apparently, there were five different polling companies or what have you that looked her dead in the eye and say, in Pacifica, it can't be done. And we have been a success story and I don't know how the polling's going for a geo-bond measure for infrastructure roads, but the door would seem to be open for bringing our community more of what they need, for example, a street to drive on.
And I'm going next week to talk to legislators like you did last week, so I will try to get the best answers I can.
VLF, HCD, CCC.
And now we know what goes on.
Yeah, I know what they are.
I know what they are.
Fewer sticks, more carrots.
Okay. So now, may I adjourn the meeting? It is now 11:02, we came in short of our time. Woo!
I'm sure there's something more we could talk about for eight more minutes if you'd like it on my computer.
Stop.
Do we have to vote?
No, we're good.